The Planning Commission meeting of October 23, 2019 will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the player of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary will call the roll.
Commissioner Tolson.
Here.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Mann.
Here.
Chairperson Hodge.
Here. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion is made by Commissioner Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castleberry. Absent objection, the agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Motion made by Commissioner Castleberry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mann. Absent objection, the minutes are approved. Declaration of conflict. Secretary will read the declaration of conflict.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Public statements. This is a time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. Give the secretary a moment. Do you have any cards on item seven? By show of hands, were there any persons who submitted a card on item seven, public statements, for things not otherwise on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Why don't you come on up and state your name? Did you submit a card?
Yes, I did.
Then come on up.
My name is Sal Cliani, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. I'm a resident of the Marketplace Association. I have a general comment in regards to the process in which the feedback relating to specific items in the application process. The homeowners do not have enough opportunity to present or dispute the facts that are presented by the applicant. So on an overall general level, homeowners feel at a great disadvantage that they cannot rebut or even bring the correct facts to light when they are presented in front of the Planning Commission. It tends to be quite frustrating when you're sitting there listening to something which is not accurate and you don't have an opportunity to come back up and actually speak to that or even present actual concrete evidence that those facts are not true or are slightly different. So I would request that that be considered in the long-term goals of this city where there might be some room for improvement because every process can be improved. I don't believe any process is considered perfect. I would appreciate if that's considered going forward where it's a balanced process to both sides when it comes to specific applications on ongoing projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons to speak on agenda item number seven? Okay. Seeing none, we'll continue. Correspondence. Is there any correspondence from the deputy directors?
Yes, thank you Chairman Hodge. On the dais tonight, you'll see several supplemental documents being prepared for you. There's, the first one is for, there's actually the first two are for item 11A1. One is regarding information related to the Housing Accountability Act to correct the record. And also, the second one contained numerous bits of correspondence, emails, and letters that we have received since the packet has been distributed. I think also as of 4:30, we received another letter here from one of the attorneys representing the Mountain Marketplace Homeowners Association. We provided that for you on the dais, and so we have those two. And then also regarding for agenda item 12A1, this is responses for the mitigated negative declaration. We received late arriving comments from the Ventura County Water State Protection District. We provided a cover memo with their comments. Their comments were very general in nature and nothing too specific, but we just wanted you to have that. Copies of what we've presented to the Planning Commissioners are at the table outside.
Okay. Try not to mix these up. Consent calendar. There are no consent, there is no consent calendar. All right. Item number...
10.
10 is identified as continued business, but I believe we have the presentation from City Attorney first. Okay.
Well, thank you to the commission for having me. Of course, I'm filling in for your longtime Assistant City Attorney, Dave Caceres, today. So thanks for that opportunity. It's great to be with you guys again. I haven't been with all of you at a meeting, but I did it several years ago, so I'm happy to be here. So I have a presentation which is on the agenda about the Housing Accountability Act and the density bonus law. With your indulgence and of the chair, maybe I'll go down to the podium and give it. It just might be easier. And I have copies for all of you and enough for some, maybe not every person in the audience, but I have some that they can draw on if they want. See if I'm, see if I'm better than the members of the public doing it for the first time. Look at that. Okay, well, good evening to your honorable commission. This presentation on the Housing Accountability Act, this is something that is going to be affecting just about every residential project from here on out. So here we go. What is the Housing Accountability Act? Okay. It was originally enacted in 1982. It's been amended more than 15 times, and that's why it's kind of hard to follow because those have been following for some time. Think that it doesn't apply to anything but affordable projects. However, that's long since left the station. So you'll see there, it applies to both affordable housing and non-affordable housing. A difficult lesson for many agencies, of all the cases on this, where agencies have gone toe-to-toe with either developers or community groups, all but one case is on non-affordable. So every case is non-affordable. In most cases, the city or county said, "We don't think HAA applies." In every case, the court says, "Yes, it does." So we've moved on from that. It applies...
Yeah, slow down. I didn't know if you just said affordable or non-affordable.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, every case has been a non-affordable market rate. So, because people were contesting whether it applied. So it definitely applies to all projects. So the act itself says that California has a housing crisis of historic proportions and that it's the policy of the state that everything in this section be interpreted in a manner to afford the fullest possible weight to the interest of an approval of provision of housing. So if there's a doubt, it goes towards the housing. So anyway, that's the goal. If I go to the next slide. So it applies to all housing, as I said, that's probably, if you don't remember anything else, that's probably the most important point. And then for affordable housing, you've got really strict criteria for denial. And for market rate, it's also difficult. So it leans towards must approve, and you'll see a little more about that. And there's also some very strict timelines where your project will be deemed consistent or compliant with all city standards of every type and description. So for affordable projects, which I'm simplifying a little bit, low, very low, moderate income type restricted projects, they must be approved under this law unless they meet one of these five pretty tough criteria. Number one, if a city's met all of its RENA in the categories involving that project and the project doesn't comply with your standards, then you can turn it down. So since we haven't met any of our RENA categories, when it comes to, I'm talking as-built now, as-built, we do have a good RENA in the general plan as far as allocations. We have that, but we don't have them built. There's a little ambiguity in the law, but we've nailed that down on that point. Or you have that, as you so often see, specific health or safety impact, very hard to find. Some transmission line is 10 feet away and somehow your code doesn't cover that, great. But if not, you're going to be hard pressed. Some mosquito source right there, right? It's going to be very unusual. Now, number three, denial is required by some other law. Very rare. I've never actually seen that, but it is possible. The land is zoned for agriculture or some other historic resource preservation. You'll know that when you see it. So basically, the whole game is down on five. If that project is inconsistent with both the general plan and the zoning, on the date it was deemed complete, and the general plan did not identify that site as suitable for low or affordable housing in your general plan, then you can turn it down. Meaning, if that site was identified and it's inconsistent with your general plan and zoning, you must approve it, notwithstanding all that. It's incredible. So, and if you look at our general plan and you look in the back and how many sites we identified and did a good job of that, that means most sites are identified as suitable in our general plan, meaning they don't have to be consistent with our general plan or the zoning. So it's kind of incredible. Now for market rate, it's similar but a little bit different. So you also have to prove them unless it doesn't comply with the applicable objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards, including designer review, in effect at the time that project is determined to be complete. So it's kind of similar, or you have that health and safety exception. So notice, you don't have the additional thing of, "And it's inconsistent with your zoning and it's inconsistent with your general plan." You just have, it's inconsistent with your laws. So that would be good, except for...
Could you go back to that page, that one, please?
Absolutely. Is that, do you have a question on that?
Just want to read it again.
Sorry. And there are copies in the back for people who are wanting to get copies and follow along. Just tell me when you're ready on that. We can always come back to it at the end, too. Is he, the charity?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead to the next one. We can, we can come back to it as you guys process this. There's a lot of stuff. So this gets into a little bit of how you prove those inconsistencies. So number one, we now have the burden of proof. Usually, an applicant has to prove that we did something wrong. Now, we have to prove that we didn't do something wrong. So that shifts the quote "burden" and has a higher standard, preponderance instead of substantial evidence. Second part, this is a killer. You have to notify an applicant within 30 days if it's less than 150 units, and 60 days if it's more than 150, from the moment a project is deemed complete. And that's a known date. When you, you know, you get that from a letter from us, you're complete. And if you don't, then, if no notice is given, that housing development shall be deemed consistent, compliant, and in conform with every plan, policy, program, ordinance, requirement, standard, or anything else. And that's a quote from the law. I'm quoting that. Meaning, when you get a project before you and there's no objection at deemed-complete date, you're done. Doesn't matter which one. And that, it's as strong as it looks. So that is the new reality. And notice that if you go on to say, "Well, I still don't like it," and you're wrong about that, and the court can order approval, fines, and attorney's fees. So it's as bad as it looks. So depending on your perspective, it's bad if you, if you don't notify them. Go ahead to the next. But, you know, all hope is not lost. So first of all, as is so often the case, if you have an adverse impact in housing, you also have to show that it can't be mitigated. That's a little hook there if you do somehow have one. Now, you can condition projects, but if you condition them at a lesser density, that is equivalent to a denial for both affordable and non-affordable. So just be aware of that. But you can condition a project inconsistent with objective standards, and that is not the same as a denial. So everything we just looked at in the prior slides, you can't deny for this, you can't deny for that. It's not the same as conditioning. Of course, you cannot condition a project such that has the effective, effect of a denial through any other means. You can't do that. But you can do it consistent with consistent objective standards. So one practice point down below, when you have future city standards, they've got to be made as objective as possible or they'd be difficult to apply. And then finally, the staff reports for housing at your level and at the council level should fully address the HAA. And we're dealing with, you know, various things where we're doing supplementals and recovering it. Well, since we know it applies to all housing, it should be a stock part of your analysis, I think, from here on out. And that's, you know, I'm advising the department that way. Let me go on to a little bit of the future, coming attractions. So as you've undoubtedly heard, there are a lot of bills that have been signed and pending throughout the last few years. There's one of them, SB 330 was just signed. It's effective January 1st. It has, it makes this stronger, I would say, in favor of applicants and developers and so forth. And first of all, it creates a new provisional or preliminary application process, highly simplified. So if someone gets on base and drops that in and the code describes what they need to do, they're vested as of that moment, even if it wouldn't be complete under our own process. So that's one streamlining they've put in there. And that kicks in January 1st, 2020. Then, the city's precluded from conducting more than five hearings. In practice, you know, that may not affect a lot of projects, but for a particularly complex project, that could be an issue. So that's a new restriction there. Now until January 1, 2025, the city may not change your land use designation to anything less intensive, including density, more than it was in effect on January 1, 2018. So they put in sort of a back poison pill to say, "Don't, don't add new standards. Don't reduce density because we are trying to favor housing." So that's that one. And finally, you can impose building moratoriums unless it's a quote "imminent threat." So they've upped the threat level for moratorium. So those are all things that are in the new bill, 330, that will be effective, was signed by the governor. And so the advisory is, the trends in the existing and new bills are further reducing local control and discretion, as you've seen. So, so let me change gears a little bit. That's kind of the HAA in a quick nutshell. The density bonus law can work in concert with the HAA. So what is that? It's also in the government code, 65915. This is only applicable to either affordable or senior housing as defined. And you're going to have that by the time you get to your staff reports. That'll already be hopefully analyzed for you as far as does it apply. So when you have affordable or senior housing, the city must grant the density bonus and the incentives or concessions. Now, you have to do that bonus without any amendment to your general plan or specific plan or a zoning change. It preempts that state law, any of our local ordinances in conflict. In fact, our ordinances are not on point in every respect with the state density bonus law right now and do need an update. However, staff is aware of that, and we always apply the latest law, and that's what the law allows us to do. That's not that I'm recommending that we never update it, but we're not in danger right now because, again, we have, we have to apply the state law, and we are. Parking standards are also reduced in addition to those density bonuses. And then, the city is also required to waive other standards that physically preclude construction, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. So this slide has a lot of data on it, but let me simplify it a little bit. How do you calculate the density bonus? The max is 35%. The first column on the left talks about the type of project that can qualify, very low income, lower income, moderate. And then the minimum number of units you need, second column, to get into the bonus. And you max out at 35%. But, so at the bottom, I have an example that simplifies it. So if a project had 20% lower income units at the bottom there, zoned for 100 units, they would get the max 35%. Therefore, they could do 135 units. So that's really what it comes down to. And those calculations aren't too bad, but the max under current law is 35%. So what is a concession? There's a lot of talk. And I view them as, there's concessions and there's waivers, and they're just not the same thing. And you'll hear some developers say, "Oh, it's the same thing." They're not. But there's some overlap, and you'll see. So number one, a concession is generally thought of as a reduction in standards. That could be general plan, that could be zoning, modification of zoning code, or architectural design requirements. Now, concessions increase from one concession to three as your affordability percentages go up. So the more affordable your project, the more it triggers certain things in the code. But you can only get three. And because you can only get three, you'll see they're different from waivers. Now, we're required to grant those three concessions unless we find somehow that that concession does not result in quote "identifiable" and actual cost reductions, or there's a health and safety issue. And that's always coming along in the sidecar, but you rarely have the facts for that health and safety issue. And then we also bear the burden of proof in denying a concession. So hmm, okay. Now if you take a look at the next slide, here's some concrete examples. It's standard to ask for a setback waiver or setback reduction. Parking requirements is one thing they can ask for. Square footage, floor area ratio reduction or increase. Mixed-use zoning is actually one thing they can ask for, even if it's not zoned for that. And then they can get a waiver or a lessening of architectural requirements. And to date, no case, no court case has specifically limited what kind of concessions can be requested. It's kind of a wide open area there. And there's a lot of academic debate over, somebody said, "Well, I want this commercial zone to be residential," or something like that. But absent an extreme case, no case has limited how much, what they can ask for. But so they only get three of them. So they don't, they'd only get three. So if you do the next page, the difference with waivers. Now, it's a little hard to read, so let me talk you through it. So a waiver is something that grants relief after the development has gotten its concessions and after it has its density bonus, and yet it still can't physically construct the project. These are unlimited. So the project is the middle box, project with the concessions and density bonus. So let's say it can't fit because it doesn't have the setback waiver, or it doesn't have the right floor-to-floor height, or it has, it needs reduced landscaping, or some sort of height waiver to get to the density and the concessions that they got. That's what it is. So after the, after you go through your analysis and they have to prove to you, to some level of certainty, that without this, they cannot physically build. Concessions are not so limited. There's no, so that's the difference. And that's why they're unlimited, because they figure there's only a limit to how many of those would ever be applicable. So there's the difference. I mean, people talk about it. In the little orange box, it says, "If it doesn't physically preclude it, you don't have to grant it." And you may decline one at the bottom that is a health, safety, environmental issue, of course. And then, some items can be therefore either concession or a waiver at the developer's option. For example, the setback could be a concession. They've used one of their big three cards, though. Or it could be a waiver. And it's on, it's a burden, it's on the developer to tell you what concessions, waivers they want. Let me go to the next slide. Thank you. So there's also some reduction in parking. So once you trigger the affordable or senior project, the density bonus law says you can't do more than these numbers. You can't, you can't give them less parking or impose more parking requirements than one parking space for a studio or one bedroom, two for a two and three bedroom, two and a half for a four bedroom. And then there are lower ratios if you're near a transit stop, which we, I don't believe we have a major transit stop, correct me if I'm wrong, in the city. So we don't, you know, LA always butts up against that. And they can get even further, and this is not known by people, that last bullet. Even if they go to one space per bedroom unit or whatever it might be, they can ask for a concession to get rid of even that. And there's no case law saying how far they can go with that. So if they ask you someday for no parking, we're going to have to look at that because the law doesn't say they can't ask for it. But it's a little extreme, but there it is. Let me go to the next, on AB 1760. So just like SB 330 strengthened the Housing Accountability Act, we have AB 1760, which becomes effective also on January 1st, that strengthened the density bonus law. And here's the main changes. And there's others, this is simplified. There are four concessions instead of three for 100% affordable. There's one change, they gave them another concession. And again, notice they're different. Waivers are unlimited. So this is, you got to earn your concession. Now, for projects within a half mile of a major transit stop, you get an additional three stories, 33 feet. Again, I don't believe we have one in this, currently in town, but there it is. Now, the max density bonus is 80% for 100% affordable with lower income households. Now, that's an increase, and you can mix in up to 20% moderate there. So that is a change. So if someone comes 100% affordable, they're going to be able to go 80%, which is a whole, you know, right now it's 35, so it's more than double. And the parking requirements are waived entirely for 100% affordable projects, but certain special need populations, you won't see those too often. So there's fewer changes in the density bonus law than the HAA in recent bills, but cities still have to waive a lot of standards upon request. So finally, the HAA and the density bonus law together, it's a more difficult planning environment, as undoubtedly you're seeing. There's challenges ahead. Number one, the local codes have to be written with objective standards. There's no more choice on that because you can't apply non-objective standards. So as we do redos, that's what you're going to have to look at, numbers, distances, things like that. Affordable projects can eliminate or reduce many city requirements, as you've seen. The strict timelines exist or projects are quote "deemed consistent." That's both affordable and non-affordable. That requires staff to have some sort of checklist and planning and get right on it. And it's hard. 30 days is not a lot of time for any project, and 60 days, you know, as far as, I'm assuming as far as staff's concerned, those are both really tough deadlines to meet. The future bills and the pipeline are even, even more strict. I won't say worse because depending on what side of the chair you're on, you know, better or worse, but they're going to be stricter. This is just the beginning of housing laws, I think. And then cities, as, as I said, they can still condition the project, but they have to be with objective standards, and SEQA still applies. SEQA is interesting because SEQA still applies. And in some communities, there's even more discussion of SEQA than of the density bonus in housing itself, that it's all about the environmental effects. And we may not be there yet, but it definitely is something that has not yet been affected by all these laws, not yet. I'm sure that people are thinking about it. So finally, thankfully for everybody in the room, that's the end of that. So if you have any questions?
Questions? Mr. Elbridge? Would you go to slide five, please? Slide five. No, it's before that. Right there. Okay, this is the paragraph, the middle one. So it says, "Market, market rate projects." So this is non-affordable, must be approved unless, and there's an A and a B, and there's an or in between, and we're at the end of the A section before the B section. So I want to know if I'm reading this correctly. The project does not comply, so it can be, must be approved unless the project does not comply with, first, the general plan, next, zoning, next, subdivision standards and criteria, including design review standards, such as whether or not there's proper articulation or 360-degree architecture, or the landscaping is correct, in effect at the time. Now, does that mean if the project failed to meet the general plan, failed to provide the zoning, but included all the appropriate design review standards, that it still must be approved? Are these all or nothing?
That's, does not comply with any of. So any, any one of those, if it doesn't comply with the subdivision standard, you could turn it down. Or if it didn't comply with the zoning, you could turn it down. So as, you know, the wording, I could have worded it better, but I'd like to be precise on this.
Any of those. All right. So if it's a, if it's a affordable market rate project, it has to be approved unless it's found that there's an objective violation of the general plan, or an objective violation of zoning, or an objective finding of the design guidelines, correct?
Yes.
And that, of course, does not apply in a circumstance where, as a result of the failure to bring these, these non-compliance issues up within 30 days or 60, depending on the size of the project, if, if these objections are not identified and notified to the developer prior to that 30 or 60 days, guess what? They're compliant.
They're waived. They're effectively waived.
Outstanding. All right. Very good. Thank you. Any other question, any questions on that? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Continued business. Now, before we start this, I'm going to add something. When we, when we met last time, when this was here with us the first time, it was determined that, or rather, I found that, or rather ordered the public hearing to be closed. However, there's been a lot of water under the bridge. A lot of things have happened. There's a lot of new staff report. There's a lot of things that I think that people should have the right and the opportunity to comment upon. So we're going to go through the process, not de novo, because I don't expect the developer to come up and repeat themselves on the project, or rather, to limit their comments if possible on the ramifications of what's been provided in the new staff report that they feel is relevant. I'm going to, I have a lot of cards, but this is an important project. So generally speaking, persons are allowed to speak anywhere between three and four minutes. I'm going to grant five for, for people to speak and ask the developer to limit their comments to 10 minutes if they have no objection to that. I hope that they wouldn't because we don't have to present the whole shooting match all over again. Okay? Very good. So the process will be, as, as is normally done, we will have the developer, we will have, people have the opportunity en masse, as long, as many as they want, and I don't care if you repeat yourself, everyone says the same thing, it's good with me. Come up and have your say. And the developer will have an opportunity to comment on things, staff will comment on, on the comments, and then we will limit things, the discussion to the commission. So that being said, the first speaker is the applicant. We have Gary Gorian and De...
Oh, we actually have a staff presentation.
Oh. Staff? Oh, maybe we have a presentation by staff?
And I, and I, just for the record, we did discuss previously the ex parte communications, any conflicts of interest, and that's, that's in the previous...
Yes, 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 however, however, are there any, we need to do that all over again. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsler Man?
I had a phone call earlier today from the developer, Gary Gorian, asked if I had any questions about any of the items that had been submitted to us on the die tonight. At that point, I said no, and that was the end of the conversation.
I had the same conversation, however, it was a week after the last meeting. If I had any further questions, it had come up during the public hearing, and they were none.
I had a conversation with Sarah Pedraza, who is a, uh, child of one of the persons who live in the senior project. I spoke with Irene Bogner, who is a tenant in the senior project, and I spoke with Karen Gonzalez, who is the resident manager of the senior project. And I'll tell you what I, those conversations were at a later time. Okay, now, may we have... Anyone need to declare a conflict? Please. Staff report?
Okay. Uh, thank you Chairman Hodge. Uh, just for a recap, I know some, many of you might have been at the last meeting on September 4th, some of you might be hearing this all for the first time. We did do a staff presentation, the applicant made a presentation, we took in a lot of public testimony, and then at that point, it was about 1:40 in the morning, and the item was continued. So tonight, we are gonna be reintroducing, an overview of the project, very briefly, to kinda catch people up that may not have seen the first presentation. There was a number of issues that was raised by the public, we're gonna do our best to summarize those, and we, hopefully we have both the concerns that were raised and a staff response. We did have some questions that were raised by the planning commissioners themselves, and they asked us to use this additional time to research that and bring it back, and so we'll explain what those are, and, and then again, provide you some of the new information that's occurred, especially in light of the city attorney's presentation on HAA and some of the other applicable laws. Just as an overview, again, this property is located on Tappo Street, south of Cochran, north of Los Angeles. All of these areas, including the Marketplace project and the areas around it, they're all zoned commercial with a mixed-use overlay. And the goal for this part of the city, per our general plan, is to introduce more residential high-density housing in this area. And the reason being is that it's near transit, it's near shopping, and it meets a lot of the criteria where we need to add housing somewhere in the city, and next to existing shopping centers has been deemed desirable. So we have several areas in the city, this is one of them, where we are trying to introduce new residential projects. So that's a little bit of a background for, you know, why this project and this location is being proposed. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to senior planner Donna Rosser to make the staff presentation, and also joining us tonight is our traffic engineer, Justin Link, to provide any answers to any questions regarding traffic issues. Ms. Rosser?
Good evening. The applicant, Colton Lake Communities, requests approval of a conditional use permit to construct and operate two three-story commercial buildings totaling 54,540 square feet for 62 small residential units known as single-room occupancies. The project is the last component of the Marketplace project approved in 2005 to allow for 36 senior apartments located right here, 72 townhomes, it's located in this area, and a commercial building, which is what we're discussing today in this area. It was for approximately 12,250 square feet of commercial. The senior apartments and townhomes are built, the underlying zoning of the Marketplace is commercial, and the SRO project satisfies the commercial component. The project is the first proposal for a single-room occupancy or SRO to be presented to the planning commission in the city of Simi Valley. In 2014, the city amended the general plan, housing element, chapter four, provisions for a variety of housing types, to add single-room occupancies due to state requirements. The general plan states the SRO units fulfill the affordable housing needs in the community for seniors, students, and single workers. The zoning definition of an SRO states that it is a small residential unit, usually between 200 to 350 square feet, consisting of one habitable room similar to a studio apartment, that may have shared bathrooms and kitchens, or may include them in the individual units. The applicant proposes bathrooms and kitchens in each unit. The overall site plan shows the location of the two proposed buildings. Here's building A and building B, with two existing driveways and 22 new parking spaces. 16 of them were proposed on Tappo Street, and six are here at the driveway entrance. Building A is a three-story, 45-unit building with a common laundry room, common lounge area, bike storage room, community mailbox, two flex spaces for the tenants' use, and rooftop outdoor patio. All units in the building are either 430 square feet or 800 square feet. Building B is also three stories, containing 17 units with a common lounge area, a community mailbox, and all units in this building are 560 square feet. Here are floor plans of the typical three different units that we have available, the 430, 560, and 800. The elevations are designed to reflect the packing house history of Simi Valley. The project incorporates murals to reflect the citrus packing history of the city. Materials on building B match building A and meet the design guidelines. Building A has a common roof deck that can be accessed by tenants of building B. This suffices the common area of outdoor space for the building. The project is conditioned to comply with the city's noise ordinance. During public comments of the September 4th planning commission meeting, a few comments and questions were asked, the staff will try and clarify. The very first one was a concern that there was not enough parking on the site. There's, the parking is for 72 existing townhomes, 36 senior apartments, and 62 proposed SRO units. There are 144 private parking spaces in the garages of the townhomes, and 36 reserved covered spaces for senior apartments. All of these are private spaces. Within the Marketplace Street, there are 31 parking spaces to be shared with the future commercial uses. Along Eileen Street is an additional 29 spaces to be shared with the residential uses, commercial uses, and public, similar to any public street within a neighborhood. 22 new parking spaces are proposed as part of the SRO project that will add parking to the community for the existing residents to use, as well as the commercial use and public. This shows the general location of the proposed and the existing parking spaces in the Marketplace Next concern dealt with the height of the SRO being much higher than the existing townhomes. The proposed height of the SRO building is approximately two feet less than the maximum height of the townhomes, except where the two elevator shafts are located. The site has different elevation grades throughout the Marketplace, what makes the SRO building appear taller than the townhomes. As seen in this picture, the elevation is higher than the existing townhome, as well as what you see over here on Winifred, how these townhomes are. The, the project kind of does that throughout. Next, there was a concern that traffic lanes will be removed on Tappo Street. No existing traffic lanes are proposed to be removed on Tappo Street as part of this project. The sidewalk and public right-of-way landscaping will be eliminated to provide for the parking spaces. To clarify, the concern of the project building being four stories, in reality is three stories, not four, for both buildings. Next, there was a comment that there was 65 units being proposed, and they thought that the site is too skinny and the proposed project is too dense. There's actually only 62 project, 62 units, excuse me, and the applicant can, could have proposed up to, from 155 up to 272 units, based on the SRO definition of 200 to 350 square foot units in the 54,540 square foot building. However, the applicant did not want to have that high of density in this community. The next concern was the amenities, whether the SRO would be using the existing amenities as, for instance, the pool or the totlot. Parking is going to be the only shared amenity between the community. The last concern here is the applicant is wanting to change the zoning. The site was zoned, commercial plan development, Tappo area planning overlay, mixed use, when the original plan development was approved. No change in the zoning designation is proposed. The commercial component will complete the mixed-use overlay of both residential and Next, there was a concern that the SRO building is too close to the existing townhomes and will impede privacy. The required and proposed building separation between the existing townhomes and the SRO is 10 feet. The elevation grade change assists with the offset of windows between the buildings to create more privacy. Next, the concern that the public was not notified of neighborhood council meetings. The city posts the neighborhood council meeting agenda on the city website and creates a flyer. Some of the board members go around to neighborhoods and pass out the flyers, but the city has no requirement to directly notify the public of the meeting. However, the city does encourage all residents to sign up on the city website for e-notified to get notifications of meetings of any future development projects being proposed in the area. Next, concern the project will cause public safety concerns. The city and outside agencies created 90 conditions of approval that can be found in the staff report to ensure that the public safety and general welfare is protected. And lastly, the concern that the original conditions required for-sale units, except senior apartments, two stories maximum, no residential uses over commercial uses, and no underground parking allowed. There was no condition of approval that required any of these entities. They were just guidelines that were proposed by the city council. Next, the planning commission was provided a memorandum that clarified the additional information that was requested at the September 4th meeting. First, enforcement of parking requirements in the Marketplace Homeowners Association. The Marketplace Homeowners Association, CCNR, Section 2.10, addresses parking and vehicular restrictions. The board has the power to enforce all parking and vehicle use regulations applicable to the master community, including removal of violating vehicles from alleys, motorcords, streets, and other portions of the master community. The senior apartment building has 36 reserved parking spaces, and each townhome has a two-car garage. The remaining uncovered parking spaces in the master community are to be shared by the residential and commercial uses. Staff is unable to determine directly if the HOA is enforcing the CCNR parking requirements due to the inability to inspect each of the garages. The city does not enforce the HOA parking requirements. Number two, determine if the project's overall design comments, our conditions or guidelines of the city council. As stated before, in May 2003, the city council authorized the issuance of a request for proposals for the site, requesting that a mix of residential and commercial uses be incorporated into the designs. Upon review of the proposals, the city council provided guidelines for the project's overall design, including all residential units, except senior apartments be for-sale units, structures on east and west side of the site be no taller than two stories, no residential usage should be developed over commercial uses, however, office uses could be incorporated above commercial uses in the same building, and no underground parking allowed. Again, these were just guidelines, not conditions. Number three, provide additional information about the Housing Accountability Act and legal council's determination if it applies to this project. The league, city legal council reviewed the Housing Accountability Act, California State Senate Bill SB 167, and determined that the Housing Accountability Act does apply to this project. As previously presented, the planning commission would need to make written findings in order to deny the project. Number four, does the applicant have the ability to increase the number of parking spaces? The applicant loaded, located a possible area to add two parking spaces on the project site. They would be adjacent to the senior apartment building and would need approval from the Marketplace Homeowners Association to add any new spaces. As stated in the city attorney's presentation, the Housing Accountability Act does apply to this project. Strict timelines must be met, or the project is deemed compliant. Project must be approved unless the project does not comply with applicable, objective, general plan, zoning, and determination standards and criteria, including design review standards, in effect at the time that the housing or development project's application is determined to be complete, or the project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public, private, public health and safety. The governor's most recent budget statement ties housing production to incentive for those jurisdictions that meet or exceed their RENA numbers, and penalties in the form of decreased infrastructure investments for those that do not. The city could gain 62 SRO units towards the moderate income unit allocation of 229 units. The project is situated within the low-moderate income census blocks determined by the U.S. Census Bureau as of April 1st, 2019, and since no income deed restrictions are in place, the project would fall into the moderate income level. This concludes staff overview, and staff recommends approval of conditional use CUPS 826, and a determination the project is exempt from SEQA. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Questions to staff? Commissioner Councilor?
Just a point of clarification, since, when, what was the date that this application was deemed complete?
July 18th, 2019.
So under HAA, this project is now deemed compliant because the deadline has now passed for us to deem it non-compliant?
The project originally was scheduled to go to planning commission on August the 21st.
Okay.
Um, and the applicant was not able to put up the sign, they did not post the sign, so that's why it was continued, otherwise we probably would have been at the 30, 31 days.
Okay, but where we're at now, I'm just, under state law, has this been now deemed compliant under HAA, because we missed the deadline?
I'm gonna defer that to the city attorney.
Okay, so, we would have a duty to notify them regardless of whether it was scheduled for a hearing. So, under that interpretation, which I believe is the right one, that deadline came and went, as far as telling them if there was a non-compliance, a specific non-compliance with a standard for which we could then, or you could... with a standard for which we could then, or you could perhaps deny the project. So, you, it is compliant. Having said that, I'll just point out that, you know, you still have the ability to impose a CUP, and that is sort of where the, what limited discretion you might have resides there, I think, at this point.
Okay, thank you. Let me follow up on that real quick. So, it was deemed complete on what date?
July eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
So, in order to, there's thirty-one days in July, in order to advise, if, if there was some determination that some portion of it was not in compliance, that notification would have had to have been made by August seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, correct?
That sounds about right.
And so, it was, it was scheduled to come to the planning commission, but not until after that thirty days had run, is that accurate?
That is true. At the time, we were not aware of the HAA requirement of the thirty days.
Just, I wanna, I wanna be really clear on this. The date that it was supposed to come to the meeting, assuming that the applicant had gotten his sign up in time, what date would we have heard that meeting if he had gotten his sign up on time?
August twenty-first.
So, we would have been four days late.
Yes.
To have any say, the planning commission would have been four days late to have any say regarding whether or not something was compliant or not. And because that, that project came, came to us, would have come to us, assuming we had it heard, and assuming we know everything we know now, we would have had no opportunity to say that the project was not compliant because it failed to meet some SRO requirement, failed to meet some zoning requirement, failed to meet a whole host of requirements, and as a result, it wasn't the applicant's failure to get up the sign, it was just we had it scheduled four days late.
Correct. But as I said, we didn't, we weren't aware of this time period at the time.
Yeah, I'm not trying to blame anybody, I'm just trying to pin it down. All right, let me, let me ask a different, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions on this side of the dais?
While we're on this, can I ask a follow-up on your question?
By all means.
So, in our process typically, because I understand, this is the first time we're really dealing with HAA, typically, do we hear projects within thirty days of it being deemed complete, or are our public hearings typically after the thirty-day mark?
We try to do it within the thirty days.
Okay.
But depending on the schedule and the way it falls, it could be after that.
So, you essentially have two meetings, two of our meetings to schedule it?
Correct.
Okay. Just, I wanted that as a clarification, thank you.
Okay, follow-up question.
Commissioner, ma'am.
Is this the only body that can deem something noncompliant, or can staff deem a project noncompliant to give us that time, then you guys deem it noncompliant, and then bring it, the project then comes to us for us to reexamine it? So, at least that gets the noncompliance started, or are we the only body that can deem it noncompliant? Can staff deem it noncompliant? Stratus, I can go to you.
Yeah, you know, I was gonna say, it's hard to get anything here within thirty days once we deem it complete, because we start to do an environmental review, we take it to neighborhood council and everything else. So, typically, it's up to staff to identify what, what the issues are early on to the applicant. And so, yeah, I can't, I'm sitting here trying to think of, we were actually dark in July as a planning commission, so there was, that was one of the reasons why I think the calendar was offset, why we weren't bringing this item at the.
But can staff just say, we're, we're not, you're, to the developer, you're not in compliance, you're noncompliant, and that at least gives us that thirty-day window now that we've met our burden, and now we bring it to our body and determine what exactly is noncompliant?
Yeah.
If I may, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Reading the statute, it says the local agency, it doesn't talk about the commission, although the commission could do that, but it also has, says the agency has to provide the written documentation identifying the provisions, explanation of the reasons. It reads like the normal back and forth with the planning staff is how it reads, and that's the only logical interpretation, given your scheduling problems, that if it was that much of a gotcha to have to schedule an open session meeting, it seems highly unlikely. So, yes, staff could do it. And if you ever have an ordinance update in this area, you'll probably wanna just put that right in there and make sure that it's, but had they come, you know, had we needed to do that, we would have advised, yes, right, do that and write, don't waive it.
And the staff should be adding conditions, if they have concerns on certain items, that is why we add conditions, and we should be adding those conditions that we feel may be something that you guys would have concerns with. And that's kind of one way we can get that done, too.
I mean, it, it seems like it doesn't matter for this project, because we're past the thirty days, but for future projects, it's almost the staff has to deem a project noncompliant. If we can't get it to neighborhood council and to us within that thirty days, otherwise we lose all those rights to even deem it noncompliant.
Yeah. And what you don't see is, this application was actually submitted quite some time ago before we deemed it complete. And all along that process, sometimes we do a pre-application meeting, sometimes we take it in, we might deem an application incomplete, there's a lot of work that goes in. And ultimately, by the time we deem it complete, we've evaluated general plan consistency, zoning consistency, making sure it's the right project in the right area. So, yeah, I think if there's a concern about something being deemed compliant, it would have been raised well in advance of, you know, during that review period.
Thank you.
I, I, I just can't agree with that. I'm, I'm just, I'm appalled. You know, and I, to follow what Commissioner Man just said, I can't see staff just saying, we're gonna deem it to be noncompliant so that we can bring it to the planning commission, and they haven't waived anything. They have an obligation to be objective and to be, you know, to follow the guidelines and the rules, et cetera. They can't just say, and I've done this in, in my practice, I'll object to something, knowing that my objection is probably not good in order to preserve my right to do something in the future. And I've, I've done that, and is it technically proper? No. I don't think staff can do that. But what I am upset about is that apparently what we need is more, and I've spoken to the city, the city attorney about this, more objective analysis, more, more objective input in our zoning guidelines and in our rules identifying specific conditions. I'll give you an example. And I, and I'm just appalled that this is apparently waived. I don't think that these are SRO projects. I don't think this is an SRO project just because there's no door on the bill, on the, in the room that goes to what would have otherwise been in the eight-hundred-square-foot units. There's a big, it's a big project, and it's a big unit. There's not a door that would go into what would ostensibly otherwise be a bedroom. Okay? It's, it's, the wall is there, everything's there, they could put a door in, bingo, call it a one-bedroom apartment. This particular project has eight-hundred, five-hundred-and-thirty, or five-hundred-and, I can't remember, sixty and four-hundred-and-something square-foot units. I think the four-hundred probably complies as, as an SRO. But the other ones, I, I took a look at a whole list of apartments that are available in Simi Valley, and the average one-bedroom is about six-hundred-and-fifty square feet. A lot of these much older units are going for eighteen-hundred-and-fifty, nineteen-hundred dollars a unit. They're the same size or smaller than a lot of the units that are gonna be in this particular project. This is a market-rate project. I'm very curious, and I'm asking all of this because, Ms. Ross, I wanna know how we determined with the U.S. Census Bureau that this would be moderate, that this would, this would qualify for moderate on the, on the RENA guidelines? Because I don't think, I mean, I think that these units are gonna go, the, the eight-hundred square-foot one is a luxury one-bedroom unit without a door separating the bedroom from the, the living room. This is, it's gonna go for two grand, two, twenty-five-hundred dollars. It's gonna go for a lot more money than, than anything that I think the person making moderate income would be able to afford. So, how did we determine moderate?
It was determined through the housing planner in regards to the U.S. Census that they, they take areas of the city, they have specific areas that every part of the city is mapped out. And this particular area, not just this little lot, but the area, is low moderate income for that area. That includes the houses around it, the commercials, everything in that area was considered low to moderate.
So, so the area is.
The area.
So, if, if an area is being redeveloped and you're putting in luxury units, it still could go down as moderate or even low income if it's in a low-income area?
It will for the U.S. Census, correct.
My, all right, all right, please, please, you all have a chance to speak. So, yeah, so, see, I don't think, I think that I have different attitudes than staff necessarily would. I think it's very hard to put on staff the obligation to come up with, you don't comply unless it's really obvious, somebody comes in with a request for, for housing and they want it in a light industrial zone, well, guess what, light industrial, you can't do housing there, so you gotta say this doesn't comply. There are obvious ones. These other ones are less obvious. Like, I don't think that this qualifies for an SRO. Simi Valley's ordinance talks about two-fifty to three-hundred square feet, this is four-hundred-plus square feet to eight-hundred square feet. These are units that are not going to, to be able to provide, in my opinion, the low-income opportunity, the income, rather, the opportunities for housing for low-income persons, or even, to a certain extent, moderate-income persons. I don't think this provides the salient benefits that we're looking for with an SRO project. If it's not an SRO project, then in my opinion, it can't go into a, a commercial zoned premises, and it would not comply. Well, that's, that's me. And I have no idea if the other four commissioners or the council would ever agree with me. I don't expect staff to read my mind on that. But what I do expect is to figure out some way to get it for us, get it to us in advance of the running of the thirty days. And taking it to neighborhood council, if we gotta avoid neighborhood council sometimes, hey, then we'll have to avoid neighborhood council. We have to call an emergency meeting of, of this, of the planning commission to get together three people or more, well, let's do it. But I mean, I just, you know, to hear that we missed this by four days.
Again, this is just for questions for staff period, I don't wanna form opinions until we take the public testimony. But one way we could improve our process is, what some other cities do, is at the staff level, we sometimes get what we call a pre-application, where we take it in early, we review it, provide them some initial feedback, and then that's before they formally submit an application. And some of the other jurisdictions where I've worked, we've actually also had the option of bringing those directly to the planning commission, for, again, for that early feedback, is this the right project in the right area, sort of comments. And so, it's something we could adopt into our process, it's something I'd be willing to bring forward, and if the city council concurs, we can hopefully affect that policy change.
Okay, other questions to staff?
If I could continue on that, I think we need to have a further conversation about process, given the rapidly changing environment of state laws. I think that it would be helpful if we may, we have to look at, looking at projects earlier, possibly earlier in the process, before the public hearing. Because at this point, if we have thirty days to act, sometimes we may have several applications, and there's a way we can get to all of them within thirty days.
Agreed. Other questions? Staff? Okay. Would the applicant wish to present, there are ten minutes, do you need your ten minutes, or do you just like to wait? Mr. Gorian or Mr., is it Alpern?
Yes. I'll let him get that going, but in the interim, thanks, Dave. Good evening, Chairman Hodge, I guess we knew which way you're leaning towards already. Honorable members of the commission, my name's Gary Gorian with Colton Lee Communities. We had intended, our colleague Dean Kunicke was gonna present tonight, however, he's had a family emergency, he's at the hospital right now, so I will be presenting in his stead at this point. Just to, before I get into my presentation, which I'll keep as brief as possible, I think that maybe there's a little bit of a misunderstanding of how this process works and how quickly things make their way through the pipeline in this or any other city. And candidly, this is probably a lot of this type of, what we're talking about is why the state has stepped in and changed some of these laws. Because it's not like we've submitted this thing in July, and then we were to hearing in August. You guys have the best staff in the business, and trust me, I've worked in cities all over the country, hands down, the most professional thorough staff there is. But we submitted this months and months before that. It takes quite a bit of time to get a project deemed complete. In between when we submit and it deemed complete, we go through a whole series of meetings with things that are, the DAC meetings, where we take input from everybody that you can think of. So, it's not like we just rush this in, give it to you, and thirty days later, we've got a project. It doesn't work that way. Most projects actually take years to make their way through the project. Your city is a little bit different than, and than a lot of them, is that these are real professionals here, and if there's a big problem, they tell you what there is. The other thing is, let's not jump to the conclusion that we're noncompliant, because we are compliant. There's nothing here, you may have a difference of opinion on the size of these units, and I'll certainly take that into consideration, and next time we come in here, if you want, we'll make them all much, much smaller. But what we try to do is, we try to provide housing for every segment of the market that is not being served. And you have a gigantic hole in the state of California of people who are getting left behind without housing, who are not troublemakers, they're not rabble-rousers, as we're gonna hear. This is housing that's affordable by design, and whether you're in a four-hundred-square-foot unit or an eight-hundred-square-foot unit, we've talked to plenty of, of single parents who are recently divorced, and they can't afford a two-thousand-dollar apartment, Chairman Hodge, they can't. And if they can get into that eight-hundred-square-foot unit and have their kids at, you know, however many days a week that they get their kids, then that's a real plus for those people. And I can tell you, there are a lot of kids, my son was one of them, that could never afford an apartment in this town, that this is a viable alternative. Well, he was going to Moore Park College, he's moved on now, he's in a construction management program at ASU. But this is a stepping stone, and anybody here who has not lived in an apartment at some point of their lives, I, I wouldn't believe it, honestly. But the problem for the kids now is, there is no viable option for these people. They're hard-working young people, and they deserve a place to live. And so, we saw that hole in the market, and that's why we presented this project. So, now that I've gotten that off my chest, and, and our next project, if, if it's determined that these need to all be smaller units, then we'll make them all smaller units. But we wanted a variety of units, a variety of units, and I think if you look at that plan on the board there, there's nobody that's gonna argue that that's not a beautiful addition to a vacant lot that's been sitting on, on Taplo Street for, I've lived here for, in Ventura County for fifty-two years. I remember when it was a Sears and when it was a Pick and Save. So, we should be embracing this kind of housing, not fighting it. And the fact that this rampant NIMBYism is here is the reason that the state stepped in in the first place. So, we didn't rush this in in July and get it, and, you know, get it in August. This has been going on for months and months. I don't remember exactly when we got it in, but it wasn't that fast. So, that being said, I'd like to, again, thank staff for doing a fantastic job. We realize that new housing is an emotional issue for everywhere it happens in the state of California. It's especially for the neighbors, we understand that. We also understand that the neighbors have a concern over our shared parking arrangement, which predates anybody here who's ever moved into any of those homes, any of that stuff. We started this project in two thousand and three or four, it was an RFP. Those guidelines were just put together for the RFP, they weren't put together for our project. The project was essentially designed on the dais. Chairman Hodge will remember, he was part of the process as a member of the community. It got changed tremendously from what we preserved to what, what we presented to what it became. So, we understand that the neighbors have gotten the benefit of the fact that this parcel has not been developed for a long time. But it, that being said, it was always contemplated that this is a shared parking that's gonna be used with the commercial, the seniors, and that every person that bought a house in Taplo Street Marketplace signed saying that they got the CCNRs, and in those CCNRs it says, you are allowed to have up to two authorized vehicles. And you cannot store, you, you can't park in the guest spaces. Those are for the invitees of the commercial and the invitees of the, the people in the marketplace. So, I'd like to clear that up right now, and if you need further evidence of that, we have slides ad nauseam, and everybody here who comes up and talks about parking, they signed that before they bought their unit. So, with that, we did take the time in the continuance, and I think in hindsight, Chairman Hodge, it was helpful that, that we did take a little bit more time to kind of roll up our sleeves and see what issues we could make more agreeable to the neighbors as they were speaking. One thing that we did find, as staff has pointed out, we found that if we work with the HOA and they agree, we would agree to develop an additional two brand-new parking spaces on the project. Also, what we spoke with the senior people, and the senior parking spots do not have signage specifically for seniors, and they're not painted, and they don't have numbers. We would agree to fund the signage for that, all the seniors, so that's more clearly delineated, and we would pay for the striping and numbers on that as well. So, in the interest of getting that through early, that's, we wanted to get that off the, off to the start. So, the real focus, we think, and I don't know that there's a whole lot that we can add to this, is, does the HAA law apply? add to this, is, does the HAA law apply? And I think staff was very clear in that. We don't specifically need to rehash all that unless somebody would like us to. And we think it's very clear that we fall under the purview of the HAA. We agree with staff in that. And that's basically, unless there's questions, I think staff has already done a better job of explaining this than we can.
Questions, excuse me, questions to the applicant?
Real quickly, Mr. Gorian, you correctly recall my involvement as a member of the community vis-à-vis when this project was first being put together by the city, the RFP, the request for proposal, the city's contract with your company, et cetera. So I'm going to ask you really quickly. At any time during that whole process, was there any thought or discussion that the commercial component would be anything other than a store, or a restaurant, or an office, anything other than that?
Yes.
So you thought that the commercial component would be something different than what was traditionally referred to as commercial component? What did you think would be added?
I'm not certain that I understand your question, but there was all types of discussion during the very lengthy RFP process. And candidly, the project would have probably been a lot better the way we originally presented it than the way it got designed from the dais. So the reality is, Mr. Hodge, that when we went through this process, there was no such thing as Uber, there was no such thing as Amazon overnight delivery, it was a different world. Life has changed. There are lots of people in the world who need a clean, safe place to live that don't have cars.
That doesn't come close to my question. My question was, did you ever think that the commercial component that was required as part, that was included within the, the, the RFP, geez, the CPD, the Commercial Plan Development Agreement that you had with the city, that the commercial element would not include, would rather, would be something other than a store, or a restaurant, or some sort of service, like cleaners or something like that?
Well, here's what I know as a planner, I have degrees in planning. A city and a general plan is a living, breathing organism that must change, or it will die. So I would never say that I think something is for certain going to be one thing or another.
All right. So if you don't want to answer the question, that's fine.
Well, I think I just did answer the question.
But let me ask you another question, since that doesn't answer my question.
Well, you're asking me to recall something 16 years ago? That's the best of my recollection.
Then that would be a different answer. Your answer would be, I don't recall. That's fine, if you don't.
Well, I didn't know I was in court. I thought we were having a discussion.
We are having a discussion. So, the parking that was, that was agreed to by the city in the very beginning, the thing that, you know, became the agreement, there's a certain number of units, there are certain guidelines, shared units, where people aren't supposed to park, et cetera. All of that was predicated upon what was known at the time that you first agreed to the CPD, correct?
I assume so, yes.
And since, I think it'd be fair to say that you didn't anticipate the possibility at that time, and when the, when the number of parking spaces were agreed to, you didn't consider that you might be building a residential, a residential component on that last .77 acres, did you?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Well, let me ask you this question. Do you know what the maximum number of units the city of Simi Valley provides for in our zoning codes, the greatest density? It's 35 units per acre. You're aware of that?
I'm not aware of that.
It is, I confirm that today. And if you had a...
So is your hotel, you don't have a hotel that has more than 35 units?
This is not a hotel, is it?
No, but it's not an apartment either.
Okay, then let's go on. Let me ask, just let me see if we can finish this up. You never anticipated that you might build a project that was 80.5 units per acre, did you?
Did I anticipate 16 years ago that I would be proposing an SRO on this project? No, the answer is no.
Okay. So you would agree that a 62-unit project, which includes densities of 80.5 units per acre, is a substantial difference, requires substantially different parking requirements than if this was a restaurant or a small market? You'd agree?
Not necessarily. Depends on the intensity of the use of the commercial. A gym, for instance, requires a tremendous amount of parking.
.77 acres?
I think it's 10,000.
All right, all right. That's, that's fine. I was just, I was just curious if you would be, you know, forthright on that.
Well, I already know, you've already made it clear which way you're going to vote on it, so.
Well, you may be surprised, Mr. Gorian.
Surprise me.
What is, what is, what is the, I believe Mr. Kunicke said last time that you anticipate the smaller units to go for $1,000?
We would like to start the smaller units in that price range. We don't know where the market will be. They might be more, they might be less. A lot of that's a function of construction costs, interest rates, things of that nature.
It would be fair to say that you'll charge the market rate whatever the market will bear. Is that accurate?
Yes, that would be accurate.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Any further questions of the applicant? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have some cards of people who do not wish to speak, and I'm going to read theirs off first, to make sure that they continue not to wish to speak, and so that we don't have to read their names after they have decided to leave. These are persons, each of which do not, do not wish to speak. We have Madhu Singh, who is in opposition, Pawan Agupta, who's in opposition, Surya Singh, who's in opposition, and I apologize for messing up your names, Natasha Gutter-Moth, who's in opposition, Robert Organ, who is in opposition.
I wish to speak.
You wish to speak? Very good. I'm just going to slide you in there somewhere. Jay Padya does not wish to speak, it is in opposition, Christine Mastroff is in opposition, Arlene Gumm is in opposition. I believe it's Gopi, G-O-P-I, Sudh Karan, Sudh Karan is in opposition, am I in the neighborhood? Okay? And Rebecca Douglas is in opposition. Okay. We'll call those persons who wish to speak. Santos Manduhano?
Thank you for hearing me.
Five, oh, five minutes, by the way.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me. Just a couple of points I want to bring up, and you brought it up, and I think you're right on, and I believe the developer knows it as well, that's why he didn't want to answer the question, didn't understand the question, or whatever it was. But they say it's affordable housing. If you are doing fair market value, the affordable, the people that this is designed for, they're not going to be able to afford these homes, or apartments, just like you said, the 400, the 800, fair market value, the people that it's intended for are not going to be able to afford these homes. He knows it, you know it, I'm sure all of you guys, the very educated people, you guys know it as well. This is not what it says it is. As far as the parking goes, it's a big issue, and he keeps saying, "We don't want to share our parking, we don't want to share our parking." It's true, we don't, but I believe what we're saying is, it's for the guests, our guests, it's for the public. So what is to stop, if they do build this, from those people parking with, he said, "We can, we can have one car, we can have two cars, we can have three cars, we can have four cars, we can have 10 cars." What's to stop the people in these apartments from not having one car, two cars, three cars, four cars? Are they going to have to sign anything that says, "You can only have one car per one unit"? Is it going to be enforced? How is it going to be enforced? What's to stop those people from doing what he doesn't want us to do? I would like to ask that question. And at the same time, like what he's saying, it's like, he's saying that, you know, "You can't park there, your guests can't park there, but these people over here in these apartments, they can park there." That's like me saying at your house, "You can't park in your front yard, but I'm going to park there, but you can't." And I just don't feel that that is right. I understand it's public parking, but why would somebody else be able to park there, but I wouldn't, or my guests are not allowed to? But those people can't. And again, what's to keep them from having two, three, four, five cars? I don't, I don't see what the difference is. That's all pretty much what I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sophie Heima, and then following Sophie will be, looks like Stephen Roseman. Sophie, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Heima.
I go by Sophie, too. I'm Sophie Heimoff. I am an attorney for the Marketplace Master Association. And tonight, I just wanted to address some of the issues that the association believes should be addressed based on the supplemental and the documents that were uploaded today to the city website. Last month, in September, Commissioner Hodge, I believe that you adjourned this agenda, or this agenda item, and requested that the city attorney and staff provide additional information, specifically relating to the parking. It was my understanding that you also requested information about how many parking spaces would be available if each one of the condominium owners parked in their garages. So I just wanted to give you that information, because I did not see it in the report today. So, based on the CCNRs, there are 72, there are 72 condominium units, and each one of those condominium units has two garage, two spaces in their garages. Those garages are not available for anybody except for those people that own the condominium unit. I did see that there were CCNR, CCNR provisions in the staff report that were not exactly quoted correctly, and I can provide you with that information if you would like to see that. But in addition to those 72 garages that include two spaces, that, that makes up 144 parking spaces. In addition to those 144 parking spaces, there are 36 designated guest parking spaces designated solely for the use of the condominium owners. That makes 180 spaces. There are also 36 spaces that are designated solely for the senior community housing. That makes 216 spaces. Based on my count of the number of guest parking spaces available within the association, or with, not on the public streets abiding the association, but in the association, there are 38 parking spaces, guest parking spaces. If you subtract the 36 parking spaces that are allotted, guest parking spaces allotted strictly for the condominium owners, that leaves two guest parking spaces left. There are also additional parking spaces that are available to the public, not just the owners of the association, located on Eileen Street and on Winifred Street. The parking spaces located on Eileen Street are marked, but the parking spaces located on Winifred, Winifred Street are not marked, and I believe that there's about 22 car lengths of spaces on that street. And I just wanted to clarify that, within the association, there are only two guest parking spaces open pursuant to the CCNRs. I also wanted to address that, based on the logic of the developer, that the guest parking spaces are not for any of the, for any of the condominium owners to use. It's, it's the association's belief and understanding that those guest parking spaces would also not be available for the tenants of the residential units, the 62 proposed residential units for use either, because technically, they're not guests. They would be living within the master association, within the residential units, the 62 proposed residential units, but those people are technically not guests. So they also would not be available to park in those guest parking spaces. I don't know if you got a copy of the correspondence from our firm from today, but I would, you know, request that you read that at this time, just to get more clarification on the issue, and...
Was it dated today, and two and a half pages?
Yes.
Okay, we have.
Okay, great. And then I also wanted to point out that the first, I mean, it's a little confusing, because the first supplemental memo uploaded today from staff provides that the proposed project is a commercial project. But then the second supplemental memo provides that the proposed project is a residential project, but never describes how the residential project can be interpreted as a commercial project or vice versa. And I was just wondering if we could get any clarification on that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Stephen Rose, Stephen Roseman, to be followed by Tony Bordeaux.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Roseman. I'm counsel that represents the homeowners' association, the master in this matter. You did receive our two correspondences, one that was three days ago and one that was filed today. I'm not going to go into a lengthy discussion in the correspondence that we have, other than to address one issue, which is specifically referenced on page two of three of our October 23 communication. And that goes into a discussion with regard to the developer's notice of exemption from being subject to SEQA. The association disagrees that the approval of the project would not result in any significant impacts relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. As provided herein and in the other correspondences drafted by our firm, the association has explained how the developer has failed to provide reports which confirm that the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic. Further, it's unclear to the association where the city traffic engineer determined that the project would not cause any, would not cause any intersection to operate below the level of service, and would result in tenfold increase in traffic volumes or adjacent streets. My point that I'm raising over here, commissioners, relates to whether or not this should be an exemption under SEQA, and whether SEQA should, whether it condition, an AR, ER should have been addressed or raised. Because it says very clearly in the presentation, the conclusion by the city, and the presentation by the city attorney, cities can still condition projects, and SEQA still applies. And I think it is clear, based on the traffic study that was undertaken, it is completely inadequate, and I'm referring specifically to the July 10, 2019 Associated Transportation Engineers Traffic Study. I think a lot of the information and data is not accurately reflected, that I believe a more comprehensive traffic analysis and study should be done, that it should have a further investigation, it should not be exempt from SEQA, and that the commission should seriously address it from that perspective, and address whether or not an independent traffic study and a much more detailed analysis can be undertaken before any decisions made, and based on that, the CUP is denied and/or an opportunity to look into the issues that I just raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Bordeaux, to be followed by Fon Brody.
Good evening, Tony Bordeaux. Thank you for having me. There's a lot of enthusiasm for housing and revitalization, and a lot of talk about that, which I think everybody can agree with, which takes it away, I think, a little bit from what this project is. And I just wanted to reiterate that the reality of the parking that's there is those shared spaces inside of our development. Those are shared, they're by our CCNRs to be shared, so if they're to be shared, and the new units take them all, they won't be shared anymore. So there's, there's, there's not enough parking there. The rest is public street parking. So whether it's, whether the units are market rate, they're larger, they're not low-income, whatever, whatever, right? Everybody needs housing. But so do, so do small units. When someone comes and rents a place, they're going to want to have a place to park. They don't, just like anyone else would need it. So I think, you know, the enthusiasm, I don't think there's an argument for saying, people, "We need housing, and we need places for people to live," and so on, but whether you make a lot or a little bit, you need to, you need to park your car somewhere. And part of the parking plan for this is take, take the shared spaces and make those, take them, I guess. And there are some number of spaces right along Taplo Street at an angle, and I don't know, we haven't, this hasn't come up before, maybe, but that's not a slow street. It's a, it's a pretty, you know, the traffic there goes at a pretty good pace. So I don't know whether that's something that's done, you know, like on LA Avenue or Cochran Street. I mean, do we put angled parking that backs out? I mean, it doesn't, seems a little fast for that. So, is, you know, is, are there any guidelines on that? I don't know. It doesn't seem like a good, I think the design seems wrong. I think it seems wrong to all of the residents there. It seems like we're just going to be battling with whoever ends up, you know, whatever the project is, the people that live there. We're... We're going to be fighting over parking. And it just seems that could be designed a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Fon Brody, followed by Susan Organ.
Hi, I'm Fon Brody, and I'm a longtime resident here for eighteen years. And a couple of concerns I have as a resident and as a community member and as an active member of the school board for my children involved in the school. A couple of things I want to restate as far as the attorney stated is, number one, the parking situation. We have mentioned the numbers of parking spaces several times, what has been stated. Our attorney has the facts, she has the actual numbers. It's written, she confirmed it. But what the numbers that you've seen, it's different. I actually live it, I see it, so I know there's not enough parking and the developers are saying that there is. He's accounting for these people who are living there. Those are not guests. There is actually not enough parking for the people he is accounting for that's living there. When I signed to live in the community, I was informed it was going to be a two-story building, not three. And he's building a three because he's interested in making money. That's why he wants a three-story, not two, because he's going to be able to make more money out of this. He doesn't care about community, he's caring about making more money. I just heard today, the presentation that was presented, that there wasn't going to be a sidewalk. And that concerns me as a parent when there are pedestrians, if there's children walking or if there's bikers. If there's not a sidewalk, that's a safety issue. Which now concerns me, it was more important, we should do a current traffic study. I don't know why we wouldn't. What's the harm in doing it? Why not? Safety is very important. We should have a current traffic study. Because if we don't have one, why aren't we? Why are we going with the old study? Where is there a control of having more than one person living in a loft? Wouldn't there be concern if there was five people living in one loft? I meant, I would be concerned as a community member why we would have maybe five people living in one loft, maybe with three people in that loft owning three cars, five cars maybe? There's no control for that. My other concern is, the gentleman here mentioned about affordable housing. A single parent who's divorced, who has children who can't afford home. Well, you know what? I'm one of those parents, single parent, who was divorced, who had two children who can't afford a home. But you know what? I did it.
May I ask you just to focus your...
I didn't need low-income housing. It's called being strong, looking for a job, being independent, and not feeling entitled and doing it on your own. And you know what? I'm not in low-income housing. I bought a home on my own. So if I can do it, other people can do it. And when you just keep offering people, you're enabling them. Not against low-income housing, because I grew up in low-income housing. But I feel, also, I have a son, and people, last time we were here, there was an actor who said, "I couldn't afford to live in Simi because I'm an actor." Well, you know what? My son wants to be an actor, too. But there are other options, too. You can be an actor, but also look for a job where you can afford an apartment. And there are times, if you want an apartment of your own, sometimes you're going to have to look at other options. Get a roommate first. Earn your way. Don't feel entitled where you're just going to live up off of low-income housing all the time. You've got to work your way up. But if we keep providing all the time, people are going to continue living off of others. My other concern is, I suggest we take the time, like I said, do the study, and maybe the commissioner should come out, look at the lot. I meant, it's really small. You look at the numbers, you say, "Yeah, we can fit the building there." But when you go out and actually see it, it's different. What you see and what the numbers that you see on the paper, it's very different. Go out there, look how small the lot is. Look at where it's located, look at the traffic, look at the parking space. You're going to see how different it is compared to those little computer images that developers are showing you. It's all pretty on the screen, but when you go out there, it's a different view. When you look at the parking space and how tight they are, it's different. So please take a moment, go out there and take a look before you make a decision.
Thank you. Susan Organ, followed by Sal Reoni. Or Keoni?
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. Regarding this project, even if the Housing Accountability Act applies, if mistakes are made during the application process, like permits granted with improper studies, we should have opportunity to address these issues. So by default, because the city didn't address this application within the 30-day period, the community doesn't have a leg to stand on? Sounds like we've become a guinea pig of the HAA in Simi Valley. The biggest issue for me regarding this project is how Colton Lee Communities has total disregard for our existing community. I will spare you from hearing all the details about the size of the buildings and the parking situation, because I know you have heard them many, many times. So the bottom line is, does Colton Lee Communities have free rein to come into our community, disregard the master plan from 2005, and build structures that are overwhelmingly huge for this small property? Their project encompasses 54,000 square feet. Our master plan provides for 12,000 square feet. Do they have the right to blatantly disregard our current binding CCNRs and just infringe upon the designated reserved parking areas that residents have been rightfully accustomed to all these years? Not only that, we need a proper traffic study done with detailed analysis to justify this project. In my opinion, Colton Lee Communities needs to completely downsize this project. No developer should have the option to just not comply or blatantly disregard a community's master plan and its CCNRs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sal Keoni, followed by Sid Keoni. Keoni, I'll bet.
Honorable members, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. A comment was made by Commissioner Hodge that planning staff should have an obligation to be objective and to be fair. And I want to build on that a little bit. A comment was made about the height of the buildings in today's presentation as well. I believe it was actually presented completely out of context. The comment to quote was, "The new building is two feet different than the tallest townhome." Both the townhomes are two-story and three-story. The townhomes that are going to be adjacent to this particular project are two-story. And this project is going to sit five feet above the grade of those two-story townhomes. So there is definitely going to be a difference of fifteen feet or more. I was just absolutely puzzled why facts are not presented clearly and objectively. And you hit it on the head when you made that comment. It absolutely concerns me when we hear comments from the government, which should be serving people, not trying to promote a project, and that's what it appears. Of course, it's an opinion, but I think this opinion has some definite and solid concerns following it. One more thing, the developer made a comment that this community has the benefit of having an empty parcel for a long time. That's not accurate. The empty parcel is not a benefit. If anybody's driven by that law lately, you'll realize it's just overgrown brush. We've had issues with it in the past with trash that we had to pay to remove it. So as a community, we've been waiting for this law to be developed. However, we expect it, and I think we do have the right to have a development that's fair and not violating our basic living rights on this community. Parking's been spoken about again and again, but I just want to give you a scenario. The townhomes are over 2,000 square feet, three stories. They were built for families. So there are families with adult children that reside in those townhomes. There are families that have two adult children who have cars. These two adult children don't have ownership of those units, but they reside there. So how is it that they're not allowed to park? Yet, anybody moving into these residential units could have five, six, seven residents, and they can all park there? I just don't see the logic behind it. We are talking about students? Well, we've all been there. We've all been college students. And if I was a college student with an 800-square-foot loft, I assure you, I'll have four or five roommates, even if they weren't paying for it, because it's a lot of fun to hang out with people. They'll have to park somewhere. A comment was made, this is only three-story. Yes, in essence, the new development is only three-story, but you're also putting a trailer on top of it, which is a structure. It actually qualifies as a story. If that doesn't hold true, then I don't understand that when I go in to get a simple, you know, small covered patio done, why is that considered a story and a structure, yet you're putting an airstream trailer on the third floor and thus not considered a story? It still adds to the height of the building. So do those rooms above the staircases. So there are more than three stories on these buildings. That needs to be looked into. We are not opposing a development there. We're not opposing housing or affordable housing. Anybody in their right minds would not oppose having renters out there. But this project needs to be conditioned. We're not saying reject it, condition it at this point. Have them propose something with all the ends addressed, so it doesn't become an ongoing battle for the next years to come. This is not going to end soon if this goes past this, because this is not an acceptable scenario for the residents. We have invested our life savings in this. We are living here, our children live here. We're not just going to sit back and have our community be affected in this manner. Have a responsible approach. I request the developer and I request the planning commission to condition this project where it's suitable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is it Sid Keoni?
Sal.
Sal. Okay. All right, then, maybe you produce, did you produce two cards?
I did, but one of us support, John comments and John was opposed.
Yeah. Very good. Two different handwriting, so I don't know. Another person, perhaps. Amir Gama? Okay. Says he's in opposition, apparently. Can I check, do not wish to speak? Okay. Linda Jensen, followed by Robert Organ.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Linda Jensen. I'm an owner in the Marketplace Homeowners Townhomes. And I am going to talk about the parking, number one. There is not enough parking. Sixty-two units who could possibly have two or three in the unit, because there are no limits to how many are going to reside. We could be adding 120-some cars to our parking situation. It was said that they could park possibly across the street in Walmart's parking lot. That would mean them crossing Tappo Street, which is a huge hazard, number one. If the people that can't find parking are going to park over there, Tappo Street is not that safe a street to be crossing. So, the parking issue, the number of tenants in each unit, it's just not viable for that spot. And I am not against, also, affordable housing. I am not against a commercial unit going in there like was projected from the very beginning. And the parking would accommodate a commercial structure in that lot. Other than that, I just don't see this working out at all. And I would like you to consider the objections to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Organ, followed by Roland Sisnovik.
Good evening. My name is Bob Wogan. I've been a resident of Simi Valley since 1987. I wasn't going to speak, and after city attorney Mr. Eldridge gave his presentation on the Housing Accountability Act, I thought, boy, this definitely looks like there's some confusion on this. Because it's new and it's complicated. And because of the complications, we kind of found out, wait a second, is there some non-compliance going on? Did we exceed the 30 days? And you could see there's confusion. And then with that confusion, they go, well, maybe we can figure it out this way and that way. And that's what I worry about governments, when laws become so complex that people try to figure it out and corruption sets in. And I'm not suggesting anything of the sort right now. But I think that's a very slippery slope. And what I would like is this board to take the consideration and understand the law. Everyone, understand the law, understand what's going on here. Take the time. If it takes a little more time, and it's, unfortunately, if it's a little more costly to the developer, in some ways, maybe even a little more costly to the city, to eliminate or try to minimize any possibility of corruption or even the perception of corruption is critical. I love this city. I want good things to happen, and I am opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Sisnovik, followed by, I guess, Guy Manicky? To Roland? No, sorry, Mr. Sisnovik?
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. Second time was more closer. Yeah, my name is Roland, and I am a resident of the community. I'm an owner of the townhome over there. And I am a parent of two children, and I do have a couple of concerns about this project. Honestly, I don't think it's a bad project, but I don't think it's the right place for this project. With having two kids in this nice and friendly, quiet community, we're already experiencing parking issues, which I'm going to bring it up again. And I do see a lot of traffic cruising around my townhome when the cars are just looking to park, you know? And usually, those guest parking spots are being used. But people always, when they arrive, they always hope there's someplace. So my kids are playing outside, and I still see cars, you know, just cruising by, just people looking for parking spots. So my concern by increasing people density in this area, I'm going to see more of that traffic around my townhome, and more cars are going to be cruising by just looking for spaces. So that's increasing basically a hazard for my kids playing outside. Another, my concern is going to be people traffic. We're going to have probably more than 100 people in this small area that definitely somebody's going to take a walk around the community, you know? And I think it's going to be not necessary, people traffic around my place, you know? If my kids are playing outside, and there's a playground also. And I'm concerned about, you know, young people or I would call, how my kids sometimes calling whenever it's not a neighbor's, different people's walking around, they just call strangers. So I'm concerned about, you know, stranger traffic around my townhome. And one more concern is, I don't have anything against the pets, but we do have issues already in our community with pets, with people not picking up behind pets. And I think this situation is going to get worse around, again, around the area where I live. With increasing people density, it's probably going to increase the density of pets around, and we're going to have more issues with that. And my third concern is that with being said that there's going to be affordable units for students, I'm really concerned about that patio on the roof. I think with 120 people, and if they're going to be students, it's going to be a lot of patio up there. And I'm a little concerned about noise distracting a quiet being for my kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg Manicky, I think, followed by, oh, you put in two cards, followed by you, and then to be followed by Don Douglas.
Hello. Yeah, I accidentally...
Yeah, I accidentally put... Well, one was for general comments, but I wasn't paying attention for general comments, so... And there was only one general comment, so it just went by so fast that I couldn't really say anything. But anyway, planning commission, thank you very much for taking the time and hearing all the concerns of the community. So I'm opposed to this project, and I do agree that organisms need to grow and evolve to survive. When I first got out of college, I needed low-income housing. I couldn't afford a place like this, so I had to live in a very high-density area in Los Angeles, and it was hard. I would have to sometimes search for parking three, four blocks away, all right? And I never wanted to do that again. It was not a good place. It was... There was a lot of... It wasn't as good a place as Simi Valley. So what I did, I scratched claw to climb my way out by pursuing higher education, pursuing professional certifications any way I could to reach a level where I can finally afford to live in Simi Valley. And because of that, I'm a better person, a better citizen. I participate in more community events. Two weeks ago, I ran the Tooth Fairy 5K that benefited the free clinic of Simi Valley. So I'm not opposed to lower housing. I needed it, but I'm opposed to high-density parking. It's... It just... It made my life harder than what it is now, and because of that, it just forced me to grow, and I'm glad that I was forced to grow. So that's basically about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Don Douglas, followed by Keith Kelly.
Chairman Hodge, planning commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm not going to beat a dead horse and talk about the issues that everybody's brought to your attention. We've been doing that now for the better part of the last two months as homeowners of the Marketplace community. Rather, I want to focus my attention on the process that I've observed the last three months or so. I mean no disrespect by my comments. I just call things the way that I see them. Chairman Hodge, I couldn't agree with you more in that I'm appalled by what I've seen the last three months. At first, I thought the presentation by the developers about this project were a bunch of smoke and mirrors and fancy political speeches, things to get people excited about the development going in here. But then, as the process moved along, and we got to the neighborhood council, and then now two meetings before the planning commission, I saw what I believe out of our city staff is incompetence. Mr. Organ was nice to say that it looked like a bunch of confusion, but with all due respect, our city attorneys, our city staff, they get paid some pretty good money to get it right. And thus far, what I've heard is we're not... Comments like, we're not aware of HAA requirements. The Housing Accountability Act was incorporated or passed into legislation back in 1982. It's been around for a long time. Major amendments happened or occurred in 2016, 2017, under Governor Brown. And so if I'm in charge of the Planning and Development Department, it's my job to know what those amendments are and how they apply to projects such as these. But in the last meeting, we heard that Government Code 65589.5 subsection D applied to this project. Now it doesn't apply. It's subsection J. We were told this is a residential project, and then we were told this is a commercial project. We were told this was affordable housing. Now we're being told it's market-rate housing. We've been told that the application by Colton Lee Communities is compliant, or it's not compliant because of the issues that have been brought forth. We've been told that Tappo Street's going to remain two lanes and be reduced to one lane and offer slanted parking as a result of more parking being added to the parking problem. So, again, confusion, incompetence, it's a fine line, and I'm just concerned that without due diligence by the planning commission, to rely on the information that you're being given with all the doubt, at least that you've expressed, Commissioner Hodge, I don't see how in good conscience the planning commission can allow this project to go forward. Thank you.
Keith Kelly, followed by Alex Castillo.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Keith Kelly, and I've been a resident of Simi Valley since 1977. I'll start off by saying, like many of the projects come before this board, I have conflicts about it. Part of me says we really need more rental housing in Simi Valley. There's a desperate shortage of that kind of housing available. I also like the job that the architect did on this project. But the other part of me says I've got two grown children that live in the city of San Francisco in rental housing, and even though there are many transportation alternatives available to them, which they use frequently, they still each own a car, and all of their friends that live in similar circumstances in that very crowded area, very congested area, all have cars. So I don't see how we could in good conscience put in basically an apartment complex that doesn't have parking for at least one vehicle per unit. So, you know, that's really difficult with this complex the way it's designed at the moment. So I don't know if it fits the other requirements of the, you know, the general plan and whatnot, but a possible alternative would be to eliminate the Building B and instead put in a multi-story, maybe two- or three-story parking garage in that space that was, is currently planned for Unit B. So I don't know. Just another idea that maybe it's too late in the process to come up with that sort of thing, but it seems like, you know, we have this severe conflict where the realities of people living in apartments is they're probably going to have one car per apartment at a minimum, and they need a place to park it, and there just isn't a whole lot of other space available in that area. So, sorry, I'll just pass my conflicts on to you and dump them on your table. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Alex Castillo, followed by Walla Grasim, I think. Grasim.
Gentlemen, good afternoon.
Mr. Castillo.
So I moved here from Northridge with my fiancee about a year ago, and we picked Simi Valley because it's a very conservative city. We love it, and I'm glad this is going on because I didn't... I wasn't aware of how many good neighbors are around us. I'm going to speak from the law enforcement. I know I look kind of young. I'm actually a Los Angeles police officer for fifteen years. I worked narcotics gangs, different units, and all I see is history repeating itself. We... In the city of L.A., there's a lot of developers that build stuff and just leave, and all the burden is in law enforcement. This building that they plan to build, it sounds more like a hostel, more like a... Not a loft. And he sounded very confident, saying, well, there's not going to be any problems, but I see it totally differently. There is going to be problems. There's going to be multiple people living in there. It's not going to just be one or two people, which is going to cause disturbance, is going to cause more video calls, is going to cause more money to the city, because the police will respond. They will be taking more reports. There's probably going to be more crime, more tagging. I'm not going to say what everybody has said. I just think it's... The whole parking issue and this all this other stuff, to me, it's just, it's common sense, really. But sometimes, common sense might not be so common for developers. I find it very disrespectful, the comment they said about low income, that we can't afford stuff. I think that all of us, an apology. I didn't realize that our neighbors... It's a melting pot. There's different ethnicities. There's different people doing different types of jobs. So I think my fiancee and I picked the best place. If I could choose another place in Simi Valley, it would probably be the same place where I'm at right now, because we're the kind of people that are around us, and we're here for the long run. I just hope that you see that this is going to be a problem, and it sounds good in the beginning, like anything else, but throughout time, maybe two, three years, I don't know, it's going to become a problem. And it's going to cost the city money because of all the response of the police officers that's going to go there. We have liquor stores accessible to these young kids. We have an ARCO station right across the street that sells liquor. We have two bars within less than a mile, two other liquor stores less than half a mile. So it's really common sense, gentlemen. So I hope that you put yourself in our shoes and see if you really feel... If you had a family member that was moving there, would you feel the same way? Thank you.
Thank you. Walla Grasim, followed by RuPaul Patel.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you again for giving us a second chance. Thank God it's not at 12:00 a.m. All right. When he was doing the presentation, he said that it's the newest living experience, like stated up there. What is new about it? Traffic? Parking issues? Or the noise and the lights that is going to be on the loft? The other thing is that making much smaller units, as he stated, because you told him that eight-hundred square foot is too big, so he could have adjusted... He said that he wants to adjust it, and it could be smaller, which means that extra people and extra occupants coming, which means more parking is needed other than what's already has an issue with. This lot is much narrower than even kids' soccer field. It's so small. I wish you, like, have visited it or saw it, or like... I'm not an engineer or an architect, but like, from common sense and logic, it doesn't fit with what he's presenting, with the nice view image of the PowerPoint. And he also stated that it's just a vacant lot, that it's been there for years, and they want it to develop it. Yeah, we want that to be developed, but to be developed as a commercial, like as we knew from the beginning when we bought those units, not as a three-stories and residential area that has more people than it should be. Last time, he also stated that he wants to have this place as a downtown Simi, downtown Simi in this small lot, where downtown Glendale, downtown Pasadena, or Westwood Village has their own parking structures. He doesn't have a parking structure for downtown Simi in this area. And then he also stated that last time that businesses are closing here, and so he wants to have more traffic in order to have businesses, like, going on and running. I used to live in Westwood, and every time there is business, there's closing. And even now, Westwood Pavilion is closing, which is on Westwood Boulevard in Pico. Traffic! But still, it is closing. And again, for the parking issue, the shared parking inside the community is just for us, for our guests and for us. And then, on the other hand, I have two kids that go to college. I have three cars. And guess what? My third child is going to college next year, which means I need to buy a fourth car. And I was so astonished when he said that he negotiated with the HOA that they have extra two parking spaces that are available, two additional, just two, or these are too many. Like, it just doesn't make sense. I really appreciate your time hearing us, and I wish you'd consider our concerns, and thank you so much.
Thank you. RuPaul Patel, followed by Scott Fenstermaker.
Respected planning commissioners, thank you for giving us the second chance to come in voice our concerns. I know you're not hearing anything that you didn't hear before, yet it feels good to come and talk about it, because it stays bonded. We heard about the parking, that we pay for the parking. Point-five percent of the guest parking spaces is paid for by us, and yet he says that we cannot use those parking. This is over and above what we earn, our own parking spots. They are not providing a single parking spot... Okay, twenty-two now. For sixty-two units, that would be, what, a hundred people or more? And yet they have access to these parking spots that we pay for. I'm not a rich woman. This is my first home purchase. I plan to live here. I plan to die here, pretty close to retirement. I cannot pay for higher maintenance when we have a hundred-and-fifty people using this such a small facility that will require a lot of upkeeping. When he cites everything, he doesn't say when HOA was drafted, and you pointed this out, and this has been my question all along. Did they know that they were planning to build sixty-two units here who will have access to these facilities, and we, the townhome owners, will be putting the bill for it? Is it fair in any way to hold us accountable for paying for them? It's a free ride to the bank for them, not for us. So... And the other point is, it's a small facility. When you have more than a hundred people housed in a tall building, they need to get out. Where are they going to go? Tappo Street is busy with traffic, and that traffic is not moving slowly. I have seen many accidents, cops out there on the Tappo Street many times. I have not requested the numbers. Do we have an independent traffic report? I have not heard of it. We need to know. This is affecting us directly. And with so many people walking in our backyards in our community, it doesn't feel safe, because they are strangers. I'm not saying that things cannot happen, or things may happen. We are having security issues as it is. So these are concerns that we need to look at, and when I saw the presentation, and I knew these changes were coming, because the governor had signed some legislations when he visited in Los Angeles, I knew vaguely. It was a little bit disconcerting, but I hope, I sincerely hope that you will keep us in mind when you make the decision, because we are directly impacted by this, and we are human beings, and they want to help the community. Yes, we are the community, too, and we are not exactly very rich that we can pay for their bills. Thank you very much. I oppose this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Fenstermaker, followed by Martin Santos. There are a total of four cards left, including Mr. Fenstermaker's, and then we'll at the conclusion of these four cards. We'll take a short break. Please.
Well, I couldn't... I told you I couldn't add there last time, and I haven't...
Well, I couldn't, I told you I couldn't ad lib last time, and I haven't read off my sheet, and now you have to make me ad lib, so. One of the things I wanted to bring up was that all the legal mumbo jumbo and stuff that was going on earlier, that we couldn't really follow through, because it was brought to us just at this last minute, some of it, to me, boils down to being reasonable. If we were reasonable people who sat down and said, "Hey, let's build something on this plot of land," I think reasonably, we'd have to allow, we'd have to make the parking spaces for those places. Call them apartments, call them CROs, call them condominiums, whatever you want to call them, it would be reasonable, as reasonable people, we would have enough spaces to at least cover those people that are going to move into whatever the apartments are, anything like that. And it seems we've gotten away from what's being reasonable, technicalities here and there. These folks are not, don't seem to be telling the whole truth all the time. We're getting information at the last second, then we have to get, you know, our arguments against it. And I also feel, going back on the parking thing again, I just wanted to bring up the, whatever the, if it's A or B, it's going to be on the corner there. We keep talking about adding 22 spaces. There's like 12 to 15 spaces that are there right now, that are going to be taken away when that building's built. I don't have a picture above to show, but there's something to be taken away. So whatever they're saying they're going to add, they're not even adding that amount of spaces. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Martin Santos followed by Kelly Healy. Mr. Santos, going once. Two, three, gone. Okay, if he shows up, we'll bring him back up. Kelly Healy? Kelly, yes, very good.
Good evening. So I was not unfortunately able to be here for the last meeting. I was out of town on business, but tonight, I'm grateful that I can be here to present this meeting for you guys. So I do want to note that I watched the video from the last hearing, and noted that there were several people last time that put in cards saying they were for the project, however, we're not here. I'm grateful to see today. Where are those people? Nobody's here today, supporting this project that we've heard from so far. It was interesting to hear about these SROs being 400 to 800 square feet units. So if you do research on what an SRO is supposed to be, typically, those are, as you mentioned, 200 to 300 square feet units, none of which these are. Right? So we're talking, again, are these commercial, or are they residential units, trying to be put in, commercial mixed-use property? When we're looking at the demographic, it was mentioned that these are for students, single parents, the elderly, but the market rate is going to go for something upwards from $1,000. I don't know any student that can afford $1,000 rent. Therefore, there are going to be multiple people occupying one unit, just increasing the density in that neighborhood, and again, adding to the parking problem. So I just wanted to bring those points into your consideration for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Jordan.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan, very good. Oh, I'm sorry, it says, "Do not wish to speak." Are there any other persons in the room who wish to speak? Yes?
My name's Kyle Bookma, I live here in Simi. I probably would have been the ideal candidate for this, and that's why I actually am in support of it. Most of my life happenings while I was single and in college actually happened in that area, and I didn't have a lot of stuff, so I didn't need a lot of space, and didn't have a need for a car, so I biked everywhere. Since then, I have been married now, and so a car is nice to have alongside of me in. But all that said, I also know people that are my age or any income that would be able to afford housing, that would be in this price range, and that would also enjoy having a space of their own. So, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other persons who wish to speak? Very good. It is 9:46. We will reconvene, honestly, at, I'm sorry, it's 9:46, we'll get started at 9:55. I beg your pardon, 8:46. We will reconvene at 8:55. If we could return to our seats, please. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting. During the course of the break, two additional cards were submitted, neither of whom wished to speak. We have Jay Chang, who is in opposition to the project, and Myung Chang, who is in opposition to the project. Very good. Are there any other persons who wish to speak? Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
I'll let Ms. Rosser go first.
I have a couple of comments to make from, comments from the public.
comments from the public. First of all, I just want to clarify that this project is market rate, never has been proposed as affordable housing, always been market rate. Next, there was a question in regards to how it was classified as commercial. In the zoning matrix, it is classified for a single resident occupancy as commercial and in our definition, and is allowed in the mixed use and the CPD zone with a conditional use permit. So that's where we have the classification, is in our commercial matrix. Jen, can you turn my screen on? There was another question that was brought up, and it had to do with the parking calculations that I had presented stating that they were a little different than that what legal had presented from the HOA. One of the reasons why my numbers were a little different, it has to do with the shared parking, where they showed a number of 38 shared parking spaces, and I only showed 31. The reason I only showed 31, you look at the top here, this is where the building is going to be, and this is where somebody was saying that those spaces are going away, which they are correct. They are going away, so I did not include those in my calculations. I had already removed those from my calculations. Next, in regards to parking, the city requirements for the parking, where they're talking about the guest parking spaces, those are considered shared parking spaces. They can park in those. They don't... they're not just for their guests. They can park in those, going along with our numbers. The new commercial, they can park in those. Those are all shared parking between the residential and the commercial. We don't separate part of the development code. We do not separate whether they're just for guests. We do not do that. The homeowners association may have a stipulation that it's for guests only, but the city does not regulate that. Next, in regards to sidewalk being removed. Yes, as I stated, the landscaping and sidewalk you see right here are going to be removed so that the diagonal parking can be located along here. However, there will be a new sidewalk created, and parts of it over here will be about 10 feet. Along here, it's going to be a five-foot sidewalk, and as you get closer to the corner, it even gets to be about 20 feet. So there is going to be a sidewalk, it's just it's going to be relocated because the parking will be where the existing one is. In regards to the airstream trailer on the roof, we do not look at that as a permanent structure, that it can be removed at any time, and it's just basically a hollowed-out structure for people to use. That can be up and moved. So we look at it as a temporary structure, it is not another floor or story. In regards to roof deck noise, the city ordinance allows for outdoor living noise of 63 decibels, and the project is conditioned that they have to maintain that noise level. The project has always been commercial, it's never been considered a residential project. And that's all the comments that I have, but Justin Link with Traffic has some additional answers.
Thank you, Donna. Chair and Commissioners, there were several comments this evening regarding the need for a further traffic study. The Public Works Department does not concur with that assessment because this project, based on the trip generation letter that was produced by Associated Transportation Engineers, projected that the project would generate 522 trips. This is in substantial performance with the original traffic study that was written for the previously and originally approved project, which assumed that the commercial portion would generate 519 trips. The difference of three daily trips is not a substantial amount or substantial enough to cause the project or require a new traffic study, so that is why we did not require the new traffic study. To clarify, and while that graphic is up on the screen, Tappo Street will remain two lanes. The diagonal parking will be accommodated within the existing riding way and on the applicant's property, so those parking spaces will be accommodated entirely off the street. Again, Tappo Street will remain two lanes at this location. The... there would be no impact, again, because we are not reducing the number of lanes on the street. In addition, the number of AM and PM peak hour trips respectively are 30 in the AM and 42 in the PM. The area intersections all operate within an acceptable level of service for the city's standard of Level of Service C. An additional 30 or 42 trips, again, were as already considered in the original traffic study, but this project, as proposed, at 30 and 42 trips, would not create an impact. So again, there is no need for an additional analysis.
Is that the totality of the study that was performed?
For this project?
For the... yeah, from your department, from your... in essence, from traffic, is that the totality of the analysis?
Was a trip generation analysis to deem whether or not this proposed project was in substantial performance with the original traffic study correct?
Okay, thank you.
And I'd actually... a couple of follow-up items. There was a question about the SEQA process. Every project that we review here for development is subject to SEQA. However, SEQA also does allow for statu... statutory exemptions as well as categorical exemptions, and this project really complies for a categorical exemption. It's an infill project, a Class 32. It's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with the zoning, it doesn't... there's no habitat on site, it's surrounded by development on all sides. It doesn't add... require any significant upgrades to... for infrastructure utilities. And of course, when I say SEQA, that means the California Environmental Quality Act. And so, we do look at every project, and we do evaluate it, and this project clearly meets the requirements for a 32 infill exemption. There was a question about density equaling crime, and that is not a correlation that we have seen in any study. This is a topic that comes up, it's usually one of the reasons why people oppose certain high-density developments, but in the scientific journals, there has been numerous studies. The city of Paris averages about 35 dwelling units per acre as a city. We try to get a certain parcel to be that high, and it's in... Paris is one of, you know, the great cities of the world. So it's not to say that there isn't problems in areas where you have more people, but that's just going to happen. But it's something that we do recognize that individual project doesn't equal crime. the other thing, I guess I wanted to, you know, hit on for the audience is, as a community, the city, meaning all of you, when we adopted our general plan, we agreed that we were going to be growing in certain areas of the city, and this is one of them, this whole Tappo Street corridor. And this is actually going to be the first of several projects potentially. And we're trying to put higher-density projects in certain areas, again, where there's shopping, where there's other amenities, where there's transit, and hopefully in close proximity to the MetroLink. Lot of cities are actually looking at eliminating minimum parking standards. Now, that might be beyond tonight's conversation and where we want to go to as a city, but they recognize the high cost of free parking, that it does have a cost. And if I could show you the aerial photo of that entire area, you'll see the shopping center across the street, and that's kind of what our zoning code makes us build today, and yeah, right there. And when you see that vast acreage of parking, that is fiscally unsustainable for a city to do. That shopping center owner can't maintain that parking lot. All the cost of that parking lot is actually passed on to the customers. And just like the one speaker was concerned about who's going to maintain our parking lots and spaces, that's a real concern. The city has a hard time maintaining all of its streets and all of its infrastructure. So when we build around the automobile, when we prioritize vehicle parking above all else before housing a people, we house cars, it is creating a model of development that is bankrupting our city. And the reason I say that is this city has $160 million infrastructure deficit, meaning we have built such a low-density sprawled-out city over 42 square miles that is very difficult for us to maintain. Projects like this, that don't add one new pipe of water lines, sewer lines, or road, or one foot of road, is how we fiscally heal the city, and I have to underscore that each and every time. The other thing I wish was that all of you were here at our last meeting, when we were looking at a project like the Farmers Project, when they were doing a relatively low-density project on such a large parcel, and we could have put 10 of these buildings on that site. That's not what that applicant was proposing. And I clearly know what everybody doesn't want, but it's important for people to fight what they do want and what is the right project in the right area. And that's a little bit off-topic, and I don't want to go too far down that path, but as a city, we do have to build housing somewhere. Our next housing cycle, RENA numbers, or Regional Housing Needs Assessment, is going to dictate, we're going to have to add 3,000 to 7,000 units of housing somewhere in this city. And we've got to figure out where that's going to be, and if we miss opportunities like potentially, you know, leaving hundreds of units off the tables when we look at certain projects, that's going to affect us ever achieving the goal. But this is one of the areas of the city, and this is not going to be the last... the first and only development down there. So on Monday night, I want to bring up to the public, I'm bringing forward to the city council an application for a grant, and this is in compliance with Senate Bill Number Two. And as a city, we're trying to ask the state of California for funds, for financing, to do certain planning that will help with our housing. And one of the goals is to create a specific plan for this area, so we have a unified development model for all of this Tappo Street corridor area. And why that's important is that it kind of would hopefully change the model that we don't have to provide parking individually on every individual parcel, but look as a district as a whole, and then also achieve the whole build-out of the entire Tappo Street as far as the parking, the signage, the landscaping, the urban design, and creating objective design standards like we were hearing earlier on the HAA. So I bring up all those topics because everything's kind of dovetailing. I... if we had more resources here at the city, we could probably achieve more of the comprehensive planning that needs to be done, but that's kind of where we're at today.
Would the applicant like to respond to any comments regarding statements made during the public hearing? Mr. Gordon.
Chairman Hodges, we are available for questions. I don't think staff or the audience or anybody's left any stone unturned to the extent that there's still any confusion on how the shared parking work. We're ready to answer that again with slides, but we don't have anything further to say at this point.
Questions for Mr. Gordon? Very good. Commissioner Twelson?
There's a comment made in the public about making these units smaller. If we wanted to, we could add more units. This is not going to be in the case of this project. You're saying the SROs could be, for another project, could be smaller.
Yes, sir. I was saying that to the extent that there's a desire to do that, we would look at that on our next project.
But not on this project?
No, sir.
Okay.
One quick question, Mr. Gordon, is it okay?
Yes, sir.
You've done other projects in Simi Valley, yes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, more than one?
Yes, sir.
Quite a few, right?
Quite a few.
Could you give me a rough guess of how many you've...
Thousand units, maybe?
That sounds about right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. So are there questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission of Staff or of each other at this point? Of each other, not saying what you're going to vote and all that kind of stuff, just do you have questions of anybody else or of staff?
So I just want to ask the city attorney for everyone's sake, this... there is no question that HAA applies to this project?
Of applicability, there is no question.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'll go. Is there a definition, or is there a limit for the size of an SRO?
We do have the SRO definition, and Jen, if you can... this is the definition that's inside of our zoning code, which means a small residential unit, usually between 200 and... to 350 square feet, consisting of one habitable room in a structure with other similar units. Residents may share bathrooms and/or kitchen facilities, or some units may include bathrooms and/or kitchenettes.
So the next question is kind of a double-edged sword. There's no maximum size of an SRO. This definition says usually between, but our city doesn't have a maximum size.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. This, we do treat this as the minimum floor, and that's what we're looking for with this number. Clearly, if it's just the room and it's no kitchen and no bathroom, it's going to be around this, but once you add perhaps the kitchenette area or the bathroom, it's going to get a little bit larger, and that was expected.
The backside of the sword would be, if this developer went with what would be a typical 200 to 350 square foot unit, the number of units he would be putting forth would probably be double, maybe even triple, within the same square footage of the building that he has now the footprint?
Yeah, as I stated earlier, if they would have done 200 to 350 square foot units, they could have put in 155 up to 272 units in the same square footage.
Thank you.
Okay, let me step in here and unaddress this. Ms. Rosser, you and I had a conversation this morning, and I asked you the question, if this project, as it's proposed now, so the 72 townhomes, the 36 senior units, and the 62 SROs came to the city now, how would we have... would this project be overparked, adequately parked, or underparked?
If it came as an SRO?
If it came as this project today, if it came to us, and you... and there was no issue about whether or not... let's assume that this whole area was zoned residential, the whole area, and this project came to us. You told me today that the project would be underparked by 30, is that accurate?
That is if it was as an apartment. As an SRO project, we don't have a set amount, but if it was an apartment complex, yes, it would have been shortened.
You don't have a set amount of parking for SRO?
Correct.
All right. So a little bit earlier, I made the comment about it not qualifying as an SRO, and the reason I said that was because I don't think it qualifies as an SRO, it's too big. It doesn't provide the salient benefits that the SROs are supposed to provide because of the costs of it. And then I take a look, and I think that... I was taking a look at some other cities, and the city of Sonoma, for example, has a rule that an SRO cannot be more than 300 square feet. It also has to be adequately parked. So if we had, as I think we should, zoning that said that you should have an SRO of a certain size, that if once it gets too big, you lose the salient benefits of it in terms of, you know, being able to actually provide housing for $400, $500, $600, but adequately parked, so that you don't have the problems that are about to befall the folks, I think, befall the folks in this area. Then you could adequately and intelligently have those kinds of units if you have the appropriate parking, you have the units that provide the salient benefits, and you probably don't have a huge project. Now, this project, I mean, think about the projects that we have in the city. The greatest density that we offer, that we provide is 35 units per acre. If it was to be a... an affordable project, and you had 35% density bonus into the current, you would have 47 units. This is 80. There's nothing near this in the city. This is almost double. A fully highest-use-density project plus a 35% density bonus, if there's affordable, and there is no affordable here. So if you just use the 35 and you're comparing it to the 80, it's more than doubled. It's two and a third times the density of what we would provide in the city. It stuns me that we took the position, apparently in the planning process, that there is no limit, and simply because it's an SRO. And I was, you know, I was thinking about, you know, as reading the staff reports, sometimes it talks about it as being residential, sometimes it talks about it as being commercial. We don't have... it's a residence, it's a single-family residence, okay? I mean, a single-room occupancy, it's residential housing. This is not a hotel that somebody's going to check into and then leave tomorrow. This is permanent residential housing. So in... I refuse to believe that because you can put an SRO in a commercial project, it is allowable, I think is the language that we have, in a commercial-zoned area. That doesn't make it commercial. It makes it residential in a commercial area. It's still residential. It doesn't, you know, if you... if I'm allowed, you know, horses normally go on a barn, and I'm allowed to go into a barn, it doesn't make me a horse. So this is what we have here, and I think about... I think about the way the staff report was written, and sometimes, you know, you were applying residential standards, sometimes we're applying commercial standards. Sometimes we're applying commercial standards. And I thought about, and I told a friend about this, and it reminds me of Mark Twain's comment about muddy rivers. He talked about the Missouri River, I think. He said it was so muddy, it's too thick to be water, but it's too thin to plow. You know, it's not really dirt, and it's not really water. Well, that's what we're approaching this about. It's not really residential, but it's not really commercial. And we logically have to look at this as being residential property that's allowed in a commercial zone. Okay, I'm getting some negatives over here, but that's okay. We can disagree. And if you do that, 35 is the greatest density that you can have. And how we sit back and say, well, it's commercial, so we can have 80. Let's put 100 units in there. Let's put 200 units in there. It makes no sense whatsoever because you have to have the parking. Yeah, I mean, it's simply, it's just not the kind of thing where you just, you know, just keep throwing these numbers in there and say, we don't care. Now, having said that, I believe that because we didn't tell the applicant within 30 days that we thought if we had, that this doesn't comply, we can't at this point tell the applicant, your density's too high. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
It does appear that they would, no matter what the analysis would have been, they are now deemed compliant with the standards.
Because of the waiver, and I understand that. Now, that would also go with the question about whether or not as they were building an SRO based upon the way they built it, and it would qualify and therefore meet the zoning. That's been, that argument has been waived as well, correct?
Yes.
And we cannot come back and say specifically, just based on the number of parking spaces, that, I'm sorry, you don't meet the parking, therefore, we're going to condition your parking, it has to have it, well, for about two different reasons. I can think of the waiver and the issue about if we've waived the density, and it becomes impossible to add those spaces out of thin air, therefore, it, under the HAA, and other, under the HAA, we cannot sit back and condition the project based on providing additional parking. Is that correct?
That's right. And the reason for that is that that would be an approval rather than a denial, and so there's different standards. But if you approve it with a lesser density, then that's a denial. And if you put so many parking spaces, and you can only really do it on the property they own, you can't say, well, you've got to buy them across the street or something, you know, that's more of a takings thing. So you've got to stick with the property at hand. If you were to impose a larger standard, it may then have the effect of reducing density, which then would be a denial, and so it would be under HAA. So the conditions you have would have to have the effect of not effectively reducing the density.
Understood. And for my vote, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'll apply the law. Okay? I mean, the developer's entitled to the law. At this point, there's no waiver of it by the applicant. The city apparently doesn't, isn't in a position to do that. However, there's a however, there's got to be a however. Page five of the staff report provided by the city attorney, Sub B, or the project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. This project is underparked to the tune of 30, and that's assuming you only use one house per unit. This 80-unit-per-acre-density project. There has been no study regarding the impacts of the, we have, I asked you, Mr., is it Link? About whether, you know, what the breadth of the study was. We have this diagonal parking. That street, I believe, is a 40 mile an hour?
That's correct.
Forty? All right. Vehicles are traveling 40 miles an hour, going 60 feet per second. You have a response time of about 1.25 seconds or to 1.5 seconds. Average reaction time, you're going somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 to 100 feet from the point that you see that the vehicle's there. This is not the kind of street where, unlike Glendale and some of the other places where you see these kinds of parking lot, people are used to it and they look for it. They look for vehicles edging out. It's not going to happen here. There's been no analysis regarding the potential traffic hazards of the parking that's been provided. If people, if 30 people or 40 people or 50 people, depending upon how many folks have cars that live in the 62 units, don't have parking on the property, they're going to park elsewhere. I hope they don't park across the street and try to cross Tappo, especially at night.
They only get three-hour parking at the Walmart parking center, so it's three hours.
So that would probably be bad for them to do that, which means they're going to be parking blocks away in the neighborhood to the west.
Probably down Winifred, probably just going down.
So, but they will be parking a distance away. Now, I can tell you that fortunately, those probably won't be the seniors. I had, I said earlier that I met with the property manager at the senior project, and she advised me that they're good, that they've got 36 units, they've got 36 parking spaces, and that they're good. So fortunately, if, you know, it was going to be a problem where, you know, people, and I saw them there, with ambulatory-assisted, you know, ambulatory-assist needs, like wheelchairs or walkers, that kind of thing, that was going to be a real problem if these people are going to park a couple of blocks away. But having people have to park a few blocks away anyway, I think presents a potential safety problem. It presents, we need to know a little bit about, you know, whether or not there's, what the level of crime is in the area. We need a report with respect to that. I spoke with the city attorney, who advised me, that there are studies that are, that the city does have the act, the ability to complete and will complete, known as a safety study, so that we understand whether or not the people who are going to have to park off the property are going to, you know, face kind of those kinds of problems that would impact their personal safety. The number of the residents requested it. I think it's a fair request, especially given the circumstances under where we have now, where there's been these waivers and there's these particular issues. I think at a minimum, that should be provided to them. It's something that I could support. We could continue the hearing to provide that study, to have that study performed. Correct?
Let me clarify. So in the conversation we had outside the meeting, the question came up as to whether the traffic study was the same as a safety study. Now, I do not know the extent of the traffic study, and I don't know what safety studies could be done, but there may be a difference between a safety study and a traffic study. That much more I do not know. I can't represent more than that. So I think what I can say, I should clarify if I can, to the chair and to the whole commission, that in the presentation, it's a little bit abbreviated for obvious reasons, and I think if one wants to go down the road of talking about specific impacts, I do have to stress how difficult that truly would be. It's not impossible, because that's part of the law. And it says, if I can read just a little more of what it requires, just if you're really even thinking about that, you can only turn down a project like this or approve it at a lower density on that safety branch, which I don't give a lot on because it's so rare, but it is definitely in the law. It says, you've got to show by preponderance of evidence, unwritten findings, that this project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. And as used in this paragraph, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact, based on objective, identified, written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date. The application was deemed complete, and further, there's no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid that impact other than disapproval or lower density. So it's a tough hurdle to get to. What I will say is that any time the planning commission or the council or any staff member wants, believes that they should look at a safety impact, it is within the purview of that board to do that, whether that's called a safety study or otherwise. But that's, that's all I can only say about that.
And I have to admit, I don't think that there's, we have enough information right now to make a specific finding that this does create a public safety issue. What I'm saying is that I think that we owe it to the residents to do that study, to have that analysis. I think that at this point, it would, I don't see, I don't see the sufficient information to sit back. I think that there are 30, 40, or 50 people are going to have to park somewhere else, are going to have to walk to their home. I don't know if that creates a particular safety problem. I think we owe it to the residents to figure it out. Let's check, look, let's take, get the police in here. Let's find out what the trap, what the crime rates are. Let's talk to them about what they think about people who have to walk blocks to home or walk across the street after parking for three hours at Walmart. And, you know, the, just the neighborhood, and figure it out. I think we owe it to them, especially under these circumstances, to analyze that question so that we can address it. If it's not there, great, then they know it's not there, and they'll be happy, and I think deservedly so. But that would be what my proposal or recommendation would be to the commission, and I'd like to sort of address that question now, to see if you'd be willing to do that, or if you, you know, you think that that's an unnecessary addition to the equation, and then we'll keep going on other discussions.
Chairman Hodges? I have one comment to add.
No.
The, when we receive these projects, we do route them to all the different departments via Public Works, including police, and they have a chance to comment on, is this the, you know, they have any concerns. And we did not receive any comments in opposition.
Okay. Did you tell them that the place was, that the, did you tell the police the people would have to park off, would have to park off-site and walk distances to their houses?
They have people that understand how to read plans, and they understand what is being proposed. Now, whether or not they asked that specific question, I can't say that. But they do know what they're looking at.
I have a clarifying question for the city attorney. So in your, and when you just read what Item B says, it says we have to have objective standards already in place. Is that the city has to have objective standards in our code of how to measure the, what a specific adverse impact to public health or safety would be?
And...
Is that correct?
Yeah, let me, let me address that, Commissioner. The problem with this law is it's not used very often. And so if we go to the words, it means, it says a significant adverse impact means, and I'm just reading out of the Housing Accountability Act here, means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact, based on objective, identified, and then it says written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date it was complete. It doesn't say city. So in the absence of that, and I also would think just logically that if there were such a standard, say at the state level, or perhaps some industry group that was, you know, like NHTSA or something like federal, that it's not limited to city, but would have to be written and identified on the date of the application being complete.
In, Mr. Peres, in your expertise with the development code, is there anything in our development code that specifically would outline what a specific adverse impact would be on public health or safety of the concern that Chairman Hodges has? Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot here.
And I'm thinking, we do have a development code, we do have a municipal code, we do have interdepartment agency review. After this project gets built, it has to meet all the building code requirements and things like that. We do look at safety, we do look at lighting, we do look through crime prevention through environmental design when we look at, you know, not creating hiding places, et cetera. So we think, you know, just walking distance is an issue. There's more issues than that. These projects sometimes have their own security system requirements, cameras and what have you, and I don't know if this applicant has a particular idea, if they want to do that, but that is sometimes things that we do encourage as part of creating a safe community as well. And those could be conditions of approval that the planning commission could add if it's something that you would like to see in this project.
So the reason I bring this up is, I mean, I'm very concerned about the idea of the lawsuit regarding this project. We know the state is cracking down on cities. It's in the news all the time, and I fear that our hands aren't tied with this project, and I want to make sure that we are as close as possible to exactly what are within our legal rights, which I know at this point seem fairly limited.
Let me posit, you know, sort of change the facts a little bit. Let's assume for a moment that the project was bigger, and that the project did not defend as the senior housing parking spaces, or that the senior housing was inadequate, the senior parking was inadequate. And so people in wheelchairs or using walkers or using with the assist of oxygen would have to walk a few blocks to the project because of the other competing parking interests. Would that be something that you would be, sit back and say, yeah, you know, we need to take a look at whether or not that provides, if that's, creates a safety problem?
Yes, I think that's a very clear public health or safety issue.
So, and I appreciate that very much. So just analyze it from the perspective of just general citizens. You know, if I had to walk, you know, two blocks or three blocks away, and I had to park my car in front of somebody else's, you know, house, how is that going to affect the neighborhood? How's that going to affect policing? How's it going to affect crime? I think that we could reasonably look at that and say, we want to know.
I understand where you're coming from. I think with the senior scenario, we have specific quantifiable things that we can say, because they have ambulatory restrictions, they're going to need, we need an extra level of scrutiny. With someone who just parks far away from where they live, I've done that before, there's no actual specific thing within our code that says what could be outlined as a specific adverse impact of that, which, going beyond just this specific micro-issue, I think this project's raised significant issues that we need to address as a commission and the council needs to address as part of the city about how we regulate these projects going forward, because we seem to be missing, there's some holes here in the code.
Yeah, big ones. All right, well, I mean, that's my thought. You know, there's, and thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts on whether or not we should request some sort of a traffic-safety study?
Sure. I see all the aspects that we've been talking about, and I don't see the significance of doing a study for this project. I don't see it.
Commissioner Mann?
I'm all for a traffic-safety study, but, I mean, we've approved projects that have had parking issues and parking concerns on Patricia Avenue specifically, and now there's a parking issue, parking concern here. So before I answer the question, is there, under a SRO, is there a state mandate, because remember there was a traffic, or parking matrix at some point, I don't see it in here, is there mandatory state-required parking for an SRO? Does our city have mandatory parking minimums for an SRO?
No, there are no objective parking standards for an SRO. What we have is through the conditional use permit process, hopefully the ability to, you know, look at the parking requirement. In the case of this HAA, it's very difficult on this particular site to, you know, eliminate a number of units and put a parking structure where Building B is. I think that was one of the suggestions tonight.
Does the city even allow parking structures?
Yeah, they're, you know, again, a parking structure, it's about a $20,000 per space cost to do a parking. That's why we don't see them in the city. It's why we don't see, you know, subterranean parking, it's why we don't see parking podium buildings that often. And so it's more likely we get this, the sort of tuck-under parking that the townhomes here have, and that's, or the carports. But parking structures are extremely rare due to the cost.
Have we ever done a safety study in the city of Simi, to the best of your knowledge, to deal with a project?
In the time that I have been here, almost four years, we have not done one. Now, we do, we do, again, route things to the police department for their input and feedback. And that's about the extent of, let's say if you say, public safety review, we do get comments and conditions when it comes to best practices when it comes to designing anything. There's ways to make sure you're not creating, you know, dark, shadowy areas, that we have places where people could hide, try to provide proper illumination. Some of these things are also covered in our building code. People are walking down the street, we want to make sure the streets are illuminated properly and adding the appropriate streetlights or lights outside the building for exterior lighting without causing glare. So, I mean, there's a, hopefully a code for some of these things that we're talking about tonight.
Any idea of how long it would take to get a safety study done?
Which would include a traffic study.
Yes. Whoever wants to jump in with the answer.
I would need a little bit more clarification, because to my knowledge, and there is no quantifiable, objective standard with respect to parking or distance and safety. So I could make a conjecture, I mean, again, I'm just throwing this out here, but for transit, for instance, we assume that the distance most people will walk is a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
That's for transit. So that's for people who do not have a car. If people have cars, I would imagine they would probably want to walk less. But again, there is no quantifiable, objective measure with respect to the minimum distance that we would give a person to walk from their car, or whether or not there is a safety ramification associated with that. Traffic does not get involved with PD and determine what is a safe walking distance, what is a, what is presumed safe, where are the areas that are safe. We don't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Have you already about, I don't think you did, because you told me you didn't, but what about the diagonal, the angled parking?
They're, they're, to my knowledge, are, I mean, obviously there are safety ramifications with diagonal parking, but it is not a concept that is foreign. There is already diagonal parking on Eileen. People who park in diagonal spaces know that they have to proceed with caution. They know that there is caution involved in making that kind of maneuver. There are other paradigms with diagonal parking, whether it's back-end parking so that you pull out. However, NHTSA, NHTSA, has mandated that all cars made since 2000, I think it's 2012, have to have backup cameras.
Okay. Well, as I've experienced, those backup cameras don't show left or right, but, look, I think I've beaten this debt, this dog. I take it Commissioner Rice is not interested?
I don't see the purpose of doing a safety study. And I'm probably the only one up here who's actually walked those streets at night, so, because I do live close enough, I do walk down your neighborhood.
Hang out with your family more, come on. All right, all right, so that's sort of, let's talk about some other issues. Commissioner Castleberry? Then Commissioner Castleberry, issues that you see concerns. I, I have a little bit of concern with this rooftop thing and the, and the impact it's going to have to the residents who live very close there, too.
With this specific project, I mean, it's very, what I'm looking, the angle I look at it from is what, what are the facts, what is the actual law we have to follow? And as far as I see under HAA, our hands are tied.
Not, not to the rooftop thing, the rooftop element, that can be a part, a condition of the CUP, because you're not taking away any units.
The only, the only condition I would add, I mean, he, the, the applicant said that they were willing to add two new spots and do the senior parking upgrades. I would add that as a condition to ensure that we're doing that. That's definitely one thing I would add. Other than that, I mean, a lot of it is just longer-term issues that I think that have arisen from this project that we need to address. I, I don't have specific concerns with this project, I just don't have, with HAA, I just feel that our hands are tied with this project.
Anybody else have concerns with the roof element?
Okay, Owen. I think a lot of these common areas that developers plan and build and are never used. If, if it does become an abuse, I think there are laws within the city, within the police department, for noise and whatnot that can be adhered to and enforced and followed. I mean, I drive around and look at common pools and common areas, they're not used a lot. Will this be used in the beginning? Yes, because it's new, but after a while, it's not going to be used, I don't think it's going to be a huge problem. And if it is a problem, I think that the police will be able to enforce their noise without a problem.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Was it, I, I may have it mixed up with another project, but wasn't there something in here for, about security cameras? Or am I thinking of a different project? No, not this project?
Oh, okay.
Maybe the applicant would be willing to put in some cameras for, for security?
Where?
On the corner, maybe, of Tappo and Eileen, and, you know, and then maybe back, since, since Winifred is probably where most people are going to have to park if they're going to be walking, maybe, maybe somewhere back there on Winifred and Eileen as well.
I could support that as a condition.
As can I.
Very good. So, we have at least three on that. Any other thoughts or ideas regarding appropriate conditioning? By the way, I don't want these lights to be like they are, as depicted here, they're 360-degree lights that sort of flash out all over the place. I mean, we have, we have, we have, we have, stop. We have rules regarding lighting, and it's supposed to be, you know, facing down, it's not supposed to be facing up. So, I mean, if we're going to have this roof element, the lighting has to be of such that it's conditioned, that it faces down, et cetera. Correct, Ms. Rosser?
Correct.
And I bet that condition's in there.
It is.
Good, excellent. Any, or, any other thoughts? Very good. If there's no other comments, the chair will entertain a motion. May, please have a reading of the resolution. This would be as, as conditioned?
Amended, right?
As amended?
As amended.
Resolution number SVPC 162019, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving a conditional use permit, CUPS 826, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Is there a second? Well, check there, geez. I'm thinking about something else. Now, the chair will not entertain a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution approving CUPS 826 and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as amended.
Motion was made by Commissioner Rice, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Castleberry. Call for the vote.
Okay, I'm really, I'm not doing anything wrong here.
Can we do a roll call vote?
The two conditions that you mentioned, the two spots and the senior striping...
Okay, it's not, it's not a right to vote, so can we do a paper vote?
Well, can we do a voice vote?
Voice vote, it's fine.
Okay.
And apologies for interrupting, but it's now unclear to me what the conditions are, so I suppose it might be unclear to others. So, at this point, you know, I guess somebody should restate exactly what those conditions are.
So, the first condition that I proposed was that we condition the applicant add the two parking spots that he came to agreement with, with the HOA, as well as the upgrades to the senior parking, which included restriping the parking spots and numbering the parking spots. And the second condition, I believe, was made by Commissioner Rice, or the second condition was to add security cameras on the corner of Tappo and Eileen, and Eileen and Winifred.
Very good.
I got the vote. It's flashing, sorry.
Okay. The appeal period for conditional use permit, CUPS 826, is 14 calendar days. Proceed to the next item. We do have one more item of business, and, and thank you for waiting to have conversations that you might have outside the lobby, because we can hear you inside the lobby. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of GPA 103, ZS 743, CUPS 821, and the project's mitigated negative declaration. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, may we have an oral report on this matter from staff?
Thank you, Chairman Hodge. Before I introduce the staff planner, Ms. Donna Rosser, on this one. This is a project that we've been working with the applicant for quite some time. It went to the city council back in 2018, I think the exact date was in April of 2018, for a general plan pre-screening amendment, at which time the city council unanimously voted yes to, you know, allow them to file a formal submittal. This is one of those few, again, remaining vacant parcels in the city, less than 1% of the city is like this, and these are the ones that are vacant and undeveloped or that wait for a reason. And the story behind this one is that there's a lot of floodplain issues regarding this parcel, and it really precludes any permanent development that's going on there. So, the applicant, and what you're, what you're in here is, they also own the adjacent property where they, there's a recreational vehicle campground use, and they want to make that very similar to here. The general plan amendment that's being proposed tonight is going to be very similar to what you see in the screen here. In the lower right is the recreation commercial, general plan land use designation, and the proposal tonight is to propose a general plan land use designation on the subject property, similar to the recreational and commercial. This is an area very much in transition to the west, and southwest is a mobile home park, to, farther to the west is single-family residential, to the north is a multifamily residential, to the east is both industrial and commercial. And to the south is actually, although it says medium-density residential, it's actually a park area, park district home property. So, very much a transition area, and right to the south of the property is one of the channels that leads to the Arroyos Simi, and a very unique parcel. So, Ms. Donna Rosser will provide the rest of the details in the staff presentation.
The applicant, Les Wagner, requests a recommendation of approval to the city council for a general plan amendment to change the general plan land use designation from mobile home to recreation commercial. A zone change to change the zoning map from mobile home conditional zoning to commercial recreation, and a conditional use permit to construct and operate a 15-space recreational vehicle campground. The conditional zoning requires access from Catherine Road. However, the parcel is landlocked, they do not have access to Catherine Road, and the condition also requires that Cooner only be used for emergency access. Public Works Traffic Division is willing to remove this condition as well. The site is surrounded by mobile home. To the north is the trailer park. We have residential high above that, and residential high over here with Triplex. We have mobile home trailer park. We also have the Rocky Peak Natural Park, and then this is a vacant lot, and then commercial buildings and commercial, industrial and commercial. So, it's surrounded by various uses. The applicant obtained approval from the city council, as Mr. Peros said, on April the 23rd, 2018, to proceed with the formal application with a vote of 5-0. The property is located on the west side of Cooner Drive, approximately 250 feet south of Catherine Road. This is pretty much the area of the parcel. The site itself is a .85 acre lot that has been vacant, but is also within the FEMA Federal Emergency Management Agency, AE, floodway. Therefore, no permanently fixed structures are permitted on the site. The applicant owns, as I stated before, the trailer park, and she will maintain ownership of the proposed RV campground. The proposed project consists of 15 spaces for parking of self-contained recreational vehicles that contain restrooms, since no facilities are on-site. The western portion of the site is required to be used for a detention basin and also serves as a recreation area for visitors of the campground. The area will be landscaped with drought-resistant plants and trees, contain a bocce ball court, and removable tables and chairs. There's also guest parking spaces provided here, and the trash enclosure is in this location. The space layouts themselves are designed where we have nine spaces that are 40 feet long by 10 feet wide, and six spaces that are 30 feet long by 10 feet wide. Each site provides a nine-foot by 20-foot asphalt parking space for an additional vehicle, as well as a private 3-by-20 area for the, the resident to have a little extra space there. Each site also has its own sewer, water, and electrical hookups. The only structure proposed on the RV campground is a four-foot by 14-foot trash enclosure that is constructed of removable PVC pipes and a trellis cover that can be disassembled in the event of a 100-year flood. The fence along the frontage of the site will have steel panels that are removable. The project is conditioned for the applicant to remove the trash enclosure, trash bins, tables, chairs, and all recreational vehicles from the site within four hours of a FEMA 100-year flood event. The applicant proposes installing drought-resistant trees and plants on the site as shown in the picture. The site has a general plan land use designation and zoning of mobile home. However, since no permanent structures are permitted in the FEMA floodway, no mobile homes would be allowed to be located on the site. Staff recommends that planning commission recommend approval to the city council to develop a low-impact RV campground. This concludes staff presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Questions to staff?
If I under, Ms. Rosser, according, as I understood the neighborhood council, the applicant said that the RVs would be there up to six months? Is that correct?
I'm actually going to let my applicant answer that question.
All right. Okay, then I'll have to see the other question.
Any other questions to staff? Very good. We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing, with the applicant like to present the project. I have three cards, and I take it that you're one of them.
Yes. Justin Holt.
Mr. Holt?
Okay, thank you, Donna. So, as Donna showed us, here's our site...
That's Ms. Rosser.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Ross. As Donna, Ms. Ross showed us, we have our RV park with 15 units and access with parking in our recreational area. And I don't think we have to go over that anymore. Okay, so, in getting to this RV campground, we have the Santa Zanana Olds Mountain View. So, the view as you drive down toward the RV campground is, you know, the mountains there, and then the view from the campground is, you know, a very good view for an RV The project proposes to bring a sidewalk to the trail entrance and future bike path. So, right there, you have the Rocky Point Natural Park, and it has the trail right there, and then you have a bike path, which is going to be future bike path, right there along the property. And there'll be a proposed sidewalk that goes out to the entrance there. The RV campers will have direct access to the trail and bike path. The trail gives you a tour of the natural rock outcroppings, railroad tracks, and backside of the train station. The trail also guides you to the Santa Zanana Park. The future bike path will allow bike riders, bike rides throughout Simi Valley. Right across the way, you have the old Susanna Cafe, is, and then we have the Corrigan Park sign is basically right adjacent to the frontage of the RV park, which of course, across the way is the Corrigan Park. And then about a quarter mile south of the RV campground is the intersection to Catherine Road, where the Santa Zanana Depot and Museum is located. Just past the depot is the Santa Zanana Park, which consists of large grass field, large oak trees, rock outcroppings, a barbecue area, picnic areas, baseball fields, volleyball court, and a basketball court. This park is, this park is also accessed through a tunnel from the Rocky Point Trails. So, as far as location goes for an RV campground in Simi Valley, this appears to be the perfect spot. You have parks, a cafe, sports fields and courts, bike paths, museums, historical sites, and beautiful views at your fingertips. Not to mention the onsite camp spots anomalies, as Donna described earlier. This is Rosser. So, I know there's going to be some questions, and here's some answers. There will be no fire pits. There will be a campground host either in the neighboring mobile home park or on-site. The RV campground will have a rule sign posted with rules such as dogs on a leash, quiet times, et cetera. RVs will be inspected before, before they are allowed a campground site. And the maximum monthly stay is six months. At the end of the six months, they have to pull their RV out for two days and call at the end of that time for availability on another space. The RV campground cannot guarantee a space. And that concludes my question.
Very good. Questions to the applicant?
I do.
Chris Tolson?
Just confirming, entrance is going to be on Cooner?
Yes.
Okay. That was it?
Okay, I got a question. Being that I camp, you're not providing fire pits, but can I bring my own fire pit in and have a fire?
Well, we're going to be dealing with the fire department through the process of building plans, and so, whatever they'll allow, and whatever the owner wants on-site, because in that area, you know, fire could be, it's a high-fire hazard area, so, that would have to be one of those rules that we put up there, if it could be something that's small that a camper brings in.
Okay. Are, one of the utilities you're providing, and I apologize, I probably read that in the report, forgot about it, cable TV or internet?
We haven't proposed cable TV or internet, but I don't think there would be a problem to look at that.
Okay. Just like, again, like camp, and those are the things I look for when I'm out there glamping. Thank you.
Yes, I camp, okay?
Well, so do I, but I'm not like, "Oh, I need internet."
All right, Mr. Holt, thank you very much.
Wait, wait.
I have, I have two other applicant cards.
Well, I beg your pardon?
Just...
What's the internet?
Just, the seat just like, should we have a discussion about parking? Just, no.
There's parking spaces for each unit.
Adequate parking, adequate.
Well, I do have a fast question, what's the notion about six months? Why six months?
Well, we've observed another parking, another mobile home park in that, that was kind of their guideline, and we were then under the assumption that an RV campground can't have a permanent residence, so you have to have a means of having them pull out, and then calling back at a certain time and seeing if they can get their spot back or another spot, so that...
Yeah, I thought the six months was a little long, frankly, but I'm just curious if that's pretty much standard in the industry, if there is a standard?
That's what we researched, yes.
Okay, very good, all right. Any other questions of Jeff Holt? All right, I think we have Justin Holt, and we have Les Wagner, Les K. Wagner. Okay, very good, and do either of you wish to speak?
Well, I'll, I'll just.
If you, if you are, you have to.
You got to, you got to come up to the, you're here, you might as well.
No, and, well, there really isn't a lot more to say, but, you know, we've been working on this for a long, long time, and, and the more we've worked on it, I realize that I think it's just like the perfect spot for what I want to do. I mean, the more I look, I mean, not only the fact that I own the park next door, but the, I mean, the lot itself, because it is in a floodway zone, and we have to have things on wheels, so it would be like the perfect thing, you know, all trailers on wheels, but, but also what Justin brought up, how there's, you know, the softball fields, the parks, and the hiking, and the views, it's just, it's just, I mean, it would be hard to put a trailer park or an RV park in another spot that isn't as nice as our spot, I mean, we just, it's just a great, great location for what we're trying to do, and so, and I also want to thank everyone involved who's helped us with this, and so, that's about all I have to say. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Green?
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's not even Ms. Green, that was Ms. Wagner. I have two cards, Loon Green. Is Ms. Or? Well, I mean, I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Is there, is there a, Lynn, I think it's Lynn Green, is Lynn Green here? Lynn Green is in opposition to the project, she lives on Catherine Road, and then it looks like Johnny Yacina or Yubera? What do you think that sounds? Yeah, all right. This person wishes to speak, but is apparently not here and is in opposition, lives on Catherine.
Yes, so, I'm Jeff Holt, Justin's father, and I grew up here in Simi Valley. Is it okay for me to speak?
Yeah, follow me.
I'm in favor of the project, grew up here, and we have friends and relatives that come to town, and they love to park a motorhome or RV at a, at a RV park, whether, during their visit, rather than stay, extended stay across the street from us, but I think it's a great spot, and it's a great use for that piece of property. Appreciate you folks, thank you.
Okay, are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
I just wanted to mention, it has taken a little while to get here, there are an extreme number of public works floodplain issues that had to be resolved adequately, and all of those have been thoroughly evaluated to get us to this project tonight. The other thing, she's too modest to say it, but the people in Mrs. Wagner's campground facility to the north, the existing one, they absolutely love her, it's a very family environment, a very caring environment, and it's something that they wanted to see replicated on this site, so we've heard nothing but very positive, supportive things about the community that's out there, so just wanted to put that for the record.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing? Probably not. There's no further questions, we close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Comments and questions, members of the Planning Commission?
Can we get more projects like this?
The only thing that I'll add for the record, I actually drive by this parcel every day on my way to work, I live in the neighborhood not too far from here. Numerous times I've seen some, not, not on this street, not on this property, cars left there that were either involved in traffic collisions or other sorts of nefarious activities, so having actual people there is going to be a benefit to the city, I think it's going to be great for public safety, I'm glad to see one less vacant parcel in town, and I think it's going to be a great addition to our community.
Now, the public, the public portion's closed. You can, you can share this later, yeah. Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission? Okay. Mr. Tolson, want to add anything?
No, I was about to move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, well, if anybody.
And this includes condition A18, correct? That was added.
Oh, yes, in the supplemental.
In the supplemental? Don't believe that was condition A18.
I think it came from the Watershed Protection District.
Yeah.
Okay, apparently, all right.
Yeah.
Very good, may I have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC 19-2019, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley recommending to the city council approval of GPA 103, ZS 743, CUPS 821, and the project's mitigated negative declaration for a request from Les Wagner to consider a general plan amendment, GPA 103, to change the general plan land use designation from mobile home to recreation commercial, a zone change, ZS 743, to change the zoning designation from mobile home conditional zoning district to commercial recreation district, a conditional use permit, CUPS 821, to construct and operate a 15-space recreational vehicle RV campground on a 0.85 acre parcel located on the west side of Coonour Drive, approximately 250 feet south of Catherine Road.
Chair will not entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution as read.
It's there on number 14.
14?
Yep.
Mine was 13. Didn't have all the extra stuff, but I move to adopt the resolution recommending to the city council approval of GPA-103, ZS-743, CUP-821, and adopting the project's mitigated negative declaration.
Motion is made by Commissioner Tolson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mann, call for the vote. The motion passes, the appeal period for the conditional use permit is 14 calendar days. There's no appeal period for the general plan amendment zoning change, and the items will proceed to the city council with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Congratulations? All righty, move on to the next item of business, which is? Oral communications and reports. Staff have anything to report?
Uh, no, nothing tonight, we do have, like I was mentioning earlier, I'm sorry, I guess I do have something to mention, on Monday night, at the city council meeting, we do have a consent item where we're applying for SB 2 grant monies, and this is going to, again, help us meet some of our housing mandates, hopefully the city will get up to $310,000, will, this hopefully apply to creating either a specific plan, updating our ordinances, and creating objective design standards, as we were discussing earlier tonight. Otherwise, I have no other items to.
Any commissioners have anything to report?
Just quickly, I just want to thank Ms. Rossiter for all the work she did on this project, or these projects, rather, she's been really busy, I'm sure, so just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Castleberry?
I have a couple of things. So, I think that this project tonight had brought forth a couple of issues that we need to address as a city. I would like our commission to make, at the next meeting, to possibly agendaize a recommendation to the council to take a look at our development, our code, to bring it up to compliance with the SROs, so we actually have minimum parking requirements, I think that's something that we sorely need.
Yeah, I'd also like to include the question of whether or not, you know, there are, there are density limitations.
I, I think we should have a conversation on, agendaize a conversation on the SRO regulations as a city.
In total, yeah.
In total, yes, in total.
Fully open, right.
Beyond that, I think Tappo Street has been something that I've been particularly interested in, the revitalization of that corridor, I'm glad to know that we are applying for money for specific plans, but I think we need to look at not only a specific plan, but possibly working with the chamber to get a business improvement district set up, and some sort of shared parking plan, because parking is going to be an issue with a lot of these projects we're going to be seeing coming forward on Tappo Street. I know that's a lot for staff, so space it out as needed, but I think the SRO thing, I was looking over the presentation provided by the city attorney, we have to have objective design standards in place by January 1st, 2020, if, under SB 330, I believe it is, or anything that's not objective.
Well, you can only, pardon, you can only pass after that date, objective standards.
So, if there's anything that's not objective, we need to put them in place before January 1st, 2020, correct?
Well, the problem with that is, under HAA for housing, and not everything is housing, okay, so there's, so you could still have, you know, CUPS for other things, but right now, according to the research that's expressed in the presentation, you can't enforce non-objective standards, even if they are on the books, so yeah, everything going forward's got to be.
At the same time, if we don't have objective standards written down, we have to, we can't deny the projects as, under HAA, if it applies to HAA, correct?
Yes, and again, housing, so there are other things besides that, yeah.
So, I think it's a conversation that needs to be agendaized and had by the commission.
Yeah, certainly, at least have a report on what the city's planning on doing to address that question, and whether, you know, what the timing is, what our participation, participation will be if any, I would hope that we'd have a shot, at least, you know, I mean, there are a lot of things that are already objective, I don't know that there's a whole lot of, you know, wiggle room in a lot of them, it seems to me like it should be something that could be addressed with, but some are lacrimity, and I'm very anxious for us to have an opportunity to participate and support, you know, creating some of those objectives, guidelines. It also would provide an opportunity, the more objective guidelines we have, the better, the easier it will be for staff to say, guess what, this doesn't comply within the 30-day period of time.
And last but not least, I spoke with Moore Park City Council member David Pollack today, so SCAG had appealed the number for RENA, the regional number of 1.3 million, and the state has denied that appeal, so we are stuck with the 1.34 million region-wide. SCAG is working on a new methodology of how to allocate those housing units based upon job centers, so hopefully it might reduce our numbers to some extent, but we're going, still going to see a very significant number of housing units we will have to zone for. That's it.
Very good, thanks for the good news.
I wanted to end on a happy note.
Any other commissioners have anything to say? Seeing none, does staff have any, Mobile Home Rent Mediation Board, tree advisory, adjournment, this concludes the meeting of October 3, I'm sorry, 23, 2019, the next scheduled meeting is on November 6, 2019, thank you very much.